We're waiting on.
Great, what happened? I don't know.
Mayor. Okay, so we're ready. We're going to, yes. All right. I want to call to order the August 6th council meeting. We're going to be changing a little bit around so that we are able to capture everyone's participation tonight. So we are going to start with our action item, which is the work around our mobility plan. And then we will go with the consent items as downstairs, and then we will have our public hearing, the public forum, and then go into the remainder of the agenda. So with that, I welcome everyone to our meeting, and we'll now go through introductions, and we'll start with Ms. Watlington.
Good evening, Victoria Watlington at large.
Good evening, Luanne Mayfield, council member at large.
Malcolm Graham, District 2.
Marcus Jones, city manager.
Vilas Ma- mayor. Whatever.
Dante Anderson, mayor, pro temp, District 1.
Kimbala Shmira, at large.
Good evening, Renee Johnson, and I'm honored to represent District 4.
Ariel Smith, lead city clerk.
Thank you, everyone. As others come in, we'll go ahead, but let's go ahead and proceed because we do want to be practical in our time and in our efforts. So we're. Okay, we'll get our technology. They're like, don't come back, don't come back. Tell me when. Are we set? Are the mics working okay? Can you hear it? So why don't we go ahead, because I just had a couple of opening remarks that I wanted to make, and before we begin our discussion of the mobility update, I wanted to let council know that Councilmember Johnson and I had an opportunity to attend the DNC this week, or last week, and glad to be able to do this. But I've learned a lot. You'd be surprised with all of the, you know, glitz and glamour and everything. There was a lot of discussion around the, talking about infrastructure in our cities. And I think tonight, we're talking about the potential to fulfill our vision for opportunity. You know, we often talk about, again, a good-paying job, a decent place to live, and how to connect people with safer transportation between those two things. We have talked about transformational investment from the first election that I held, and with every council since then. We've done a lot of the studies. We've actually categorized and evaluated what kinds of infrastructure we need to do and how we need to tackle it. But we've never had an honor, an opportunity like this, one that we have today. If you go back in time, years ago, I think any council member would have said, let's purchase the red line. Twenty-six years have passed, and we haven't gotten that done. But tonight, we are in this moment feeling what I think many former colleagues and predecessors wished that they had made possible, and we have the opportunity to now make it possible. I want to share the thanks because this has been going on for a good while. For the last four years, if anyone else, I know that Mr. Driggs and Mr. Bakari will remember Harvey Gant leading a distinctive group of people who were talking about the very same infrastructure that we're talking about today. Harvey Gant was the leader, but there were members across our entire footprint that participated in this. And as a result, I think council members understand, or can understand, the amount of time and attention and effort that many people have put into this. You know, we had a 2040 mobility plan, a strategic mobility plan. We've reaffirmed all of these plans with, including the ones that help us have a better city, the strategic energy plan, Vision Zero, all of these things we know about. But this is our opportunity, because the opportunity is built on a solid foundation for the continued progress for a growing city. Think about what we're doing in the next several weeks: affordable housing bonds, transit-oriented development potential, minority business participation, equitable initiatives. And now what we have to talk about is infrastructure that's necessary: our sidewalks, our better roads, and even more. I believe this council will leave a legacy of quality of life in our city, because we are ready for this moment to finally make good on years of good work by many others. And I hope that at one time, when the youngsters that we know in this town, maybe when Bishop is actually elected to be mayor, Ms. Johnson, that he would be ready to say that he has a foundation strong enough that this place is a city that he chooses to live and work in. So with that, I want to say thank you all for the participation that we're going to have tonight. Tonight, I'm going to start off with asking members of the, and thanking the members of the committees that have worked on this so fast and so much out of our council. And of course, I left all of my notes, but I, upstairs, with all of the names in it. So, but I want to especially appreciate Ed and Marjorie, Victoria and Renee, for the work that they've done and what they bring to the table. James Mitchell, oh, who would I miss? Malcolm Graham. And then James Mitchell, the small group, and who were the members that you had, Dante, and who was our third?
That was it.
There's two, the two people that, and Ed was there again. So I want you to know that this is absolutely amazing that we have had this kind of qualitative work done by others and also captured in this moment, this day. So with that, I want to recognize Ed Driggs to begin our discussion, followed by Victoria Watlington for comment, okay? And then the manager, right? We're going to have the committee and then the manager.
All right. So we're not doing a presentation in many time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am getting this wrong. We're going to have a presentation, we're going to have Ed introduce, and then the manager, because I see all of the staff back there behind, I just couldn't see past, you know, it's been a long time. I've been out for a week or so, so I'm just catching up with you guys, okay? Ed?
So, staff, is that right? Because I think I just listened to talk after.
Okay. Let's go with the staff presentation. Mr. Jones, take us there.
Mayors, mayor, members of council. So I've introduced what I believe is the best team in the country when it comes to getting things done. And before I turn it over to Ed McKinney, I would like to just focus just a little bit on this slide, and I think it speaks volumes, because when we start to take one issue in isolation, you can pick that issue apart, but this council, through numerous annual strategy meetings, and days and days of looking at goals and objectives and priorities, have really landed on what I call a three-legged stool. You know, it's a good place to live, a good-paying job, and a way to get back and forth. And so I start off with that because we have, you have continued to do a lot of great things even before the discussion tonight. A lot has happened since the Charlotte Moves Group. Your efforts on council alongside the community leaders have come to advance all the priorities and not just this one, and we believe it's done in a way that's never been done before. Whether it's through the Corridors of Opportunity Program, or efforts to address safety and the environment through Vision Zero and CAPP, these efforts work together. You have been building on minority business enterprise and transformational investments in affordable housing. These programs, especially when we start to think about MWSBEs, these programs provide capital, technical expertise, critical networking, as well as bringing the MBEs to the next level, legal assistance programs, how to navigate complex issues. And so when we start to think about some of the things that you've done, not just the CAPP, or what's happening around CBI, but even the Charlotte Small Business Growth Fund, which, together with the private sector and the philanthropic community, that supports $40 million in lending to businesses that are unable to get traditional capital. Your $2 million investment helped make that happen. What's going to happen tonight as Ed McKinney does his presentation, you'll see what's in it for the city of Charlotte. And that includes, in year one of the once-in-sales tax, the 40% portion that comes to transportation in Charlotte, it's worth $100 million, $102 million to be exact. And that grows. So I guess what I'm saying is, the community is poised to have a discussion around transportation, much like what you've done with affordable housing and what you've done with good-paying jobs. I do want to talk a little bit about affordable housing before I turn it over to Ed. In this last budget, you doubled your efforts from the housing bond from $50 million to $100 million. There's some great work, and I won't do a spoiler alert, but there's some great work that's going on in the Housing and State Communities Committee about how to deploy those funds in a way that's never been done before. So what I would say is that as we are talking about mobility tonight, or transportation tonight, that doesn't wipe out four years of work around some other key areas that actually work together with what we're trying to do here. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over, Mayor, to Ed McKinney.
Thank you. Again, Ed McKinney, Special Assistant to the Manager for Mobility. Couple things, I'll just going to go back real quick. Just a reminder, what we're going to do tonight is talk really about two things and two actions coming up for you: transportation funding, which is really centered around the draft legislation, and then the red line. So I'll walk through, and Sarah Hazel and I will walk through the draft legislation, specifically around the funding, and then we'll turn it over to Brent Kegel to talk through the red line purchase. Quick schedule, we've talked about this before. Here's where we are on our action review, and again, the goal next, next week, it's September 3rd, is these two requested actions. Couple things, just to kind of build upon what the manager just described, again, number of things we've been doing, certainly the plans that have already been described by the mayor. Thing that I think we wanted to sort of reemphasize is really the time is now. This notion of funding is critical to moving forward. It's certainly critical to our ability to move forward on our desired multimodal road investment, specific to our, to our strategic mobility plan. Without any more funding, we simply can't do our rail projects that are in the plan, and we can't extend the frequency and the extension of our bus system. And so that's, it's really important that, to move forward on these big plans, funding is absolutely critical. Let me talk about the funding, and let me give you a sense of a little bit of context of the scale, and maybe a different way to think about this as we move forward and some of these decisions to be made. This is some information prepared by the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance a couple years ago, that just talked about the impact of doing nothing and the impact of doing something. And so on the right side, you have is sort of what, what you can gain out of this, and on the other side is what you can lose. And so, scale on the, on the red side, lots, if we don't address congestion, right, there's some real impacts. These numbers are almost hard to kind of comprehend, and I don't want to imply that the investment that we could make, even transformational, would make that red go away, right? We're constantly and will always be managing congestion. I think the thing to remember, though, and the point to be made here is what we can do, right? What the investment we put in place will do. And so again, every dollar we spend will have an impact and the opportunity to extend jobs, to extend economic output, earnings, et cetera. So it's really important to think about all the opportunities we have with this investment that's not just transportation-related, right? It's really a economic investment strategy. Hold the idea of this $100 million number in your mind for a moment, because I'm going to use that increment in almost a casual way, given the scale of what we're talking about, but remind, you know, remember this slide and think about that $100 million of investment, because you're going to see it in some big numbers as we go through. What does this mean for Charlotte? As the manager described, I want to spend a little bit of time and talk about, certainly the regional impact of this investment, but also being really clear with, with you and the community about what this means for Charlotte. Before I get into the details, we've talked about the split of the funding strategy, we certainly talked about the scale, but let's, let's pause for a moment and think about how unique this is. There's certainly no community in the state that is thinking about transportation funding from this broad multimodal perspective. It'll be a really interesting model, and certainly something that may be considered throughout the state and other places that are growing, right? This is, this is a really unique way to think about our sales tax. It's pretty unique nationally. There's some great examples, we've been learning a little bit from Phoenix, that have, they established a $31 billion investment program over a 30-year period, and they did exactly the same thing. They understood a city like ours that is growing so fast, has needs that extend just beyond transit. So they've, they've portioned some of that funding for transit, for rail, they've portioned some of that for bus, and they certainly proportioned some of that for road. So it's, it's a unique way to think about it. The scale is dramatic, $19 billion. We mentioned, and the manager talked about what that one year looks like, so this is a one year of the whole program, the 345 million. And remember, it's not just a transit plan, it's not just a rail plan, it's not just a bus plan, it's not just a road plan. This is a mobility strategy and a funding across all of those to really describe and to extend the mobility vision we have across the city. It's intentional, and a couple of things I want to mention here is, again, the $100 million for the Charlotte and the split of the roads between us and the towns. But again, the notion that we're not, and there's places throughout our, throughout Charlotte that don't have access to transit, to bus or rail, and probably never will. So this road investment is critical to that. There's some basic needs, there are sidewalks, there's street lighting, et cetera. There are places that won't have access to rail itself, long-term, and there's opportunity to provide bus frequency and extend the access and bus frequency and control over that mobility across our city, places that we can invest to in today, in a very efficient way for bus. And so the notion is, we've got a broad way to think about our transportation spending that's not just on, in any one particular mode. Another thing I want to describe in terms of about the scale of this program, and I want to sort of dissect this diagram a little bit for a moment, and the uniqueness of this revenue. So there's a scale to this revenue that's dramatic, but it's also about the impact it has on our bond capacity and our ability to do lots of other things and address a lot of your other priorities. So on the right side of this is the revenue I just described, and I've, we bucketed into two-year buckets to sort of be able to compare it to our bond program. So at the bottom, you see the first two years, at the top, you see the next two years, the 209, the 226, and I, we married that up to the next two bond cycles, '26 and '28, so you can, you can compare these two numbers. So the revenue we're talking about over these two-year periods compared to our bond capacity is more or less equal. So this is a scale that's pretty unprecedented in terms of the funding, and we'll do lots of projects, we'll have a lot of ability to accelerate the investments that we plan for in our strategic mobility plan. But that also allows us to do something pretty unique around the bond capacity. So that revenue is really income, and our debt capacity, the bond side, is really around capacity. So having more revenue will open up capacity and flexibility on the bond side. And so it's not just about the projects we can do with the 209, but it's what it will allow us to do in our future bond cycles. The steady state has a limit on it. This revenue allows us to expand that capacity, give us flexibility. Those, that flexibility will give council the ability to think about additional goals and additional investment beyond our current steady state for, again, important priorities around housing, neighborhood investment, et cetera. And so two halves of this. The revenue is really important, that cash in hand will give us the ability to accelerate projects, but it's important, and almost equally as impactful, to think about the capacity it will provide within our bonds and the ability to address, again, not just transportation, but your goals across, across the city and across your priorities. Drilling it down, I want to start to now describe what that investment looks like relative to the strategic mobility plan, the discussions we've been having around our, our strategic investment areas, and what that can mean for our projects moving forward. Here on one side, you're just seeing the recently adopted, your recently adopted Capital Improvement Program for, for 2024, the unique scale, the 400 million that was adopted in your budget, and you apportioned a portion of that for the strategic areas, the 55 million. Again, continuing to compare the scale of that investment and this revenue, it's essentially four times, again, over a two-year period, that's four times the scale of our strategic investment program as established. That's, again, on another comparison, that's 11% of our general fund budget. This, the scale of this is pretty significant, and will allow us to advance our strategic projects and our strategic area investment in a, in a pretty dramatic way. Reminder, again, the strategic area investment program that we've described, we've talked about this over the last couple of years, we've talked about it in detail at your, at your annual strategy meeting, this, this process where we went and focused in on where our priorities are, where are safety issues, where is growth happening, where is congestion, targeted to those areas so that we could be really specific to the investments and have real impact. As a reminder, again, we've focused in on that and in those areas in very specific ways. This is just a snapshot of District 5, going into an example here on the Far East. Each area is unique, and so again, an example of how we can use those dollars, this new revenue, in multimodal ways to address issues that are specific in each area. Again, using the Harrisburg Road example, this is a place, again, where transit investment, there are bus routes in this area, but don't extend and don't provide the kind of service that you would see in other places in the city. The needs here, though, are different, right? So it's not just about transit, sidewalk gaps, street lighting, safe crossings, intersection improvements. This, this money allows us to think about multimodal investment across the city in unique ways tailored to the unique conditions of each part of our city. That work is going on, so I wanted to give you a little bit of a preview of this. So this is, this is our strategic investment team at work. This is just over the past summer, and so they've been going out, this is actually a field trip they did out in the Far East, the Harrisburg Road corridor, to really begin to understand what are the kinds of projects and how should we scope those. A couple of things I want to share that are unique to this. It's across all of our disciplines and all of the people that touch projects, from the contracts to the construction. That includes our CBI team, to understand the opportunities for business, small business and minority participation in these projects, how do we deliver projects in different ways that allow us to achieve those kinds of goals. And so we're thinking about these projects and this, this investment in a holistic way to address, again, not just transportation issues, use those dollars to address and advance the goals that you have as a city. Community needs, protecting those, making sure that those projects are done in a way that's efficient, time kills every project, and focus on small minority business. That team's ready to go, and again, with this new investment and this new funding, we'll be able to advance those projects quickly. Real quick, back to the big picture. Real quick, back to the big picture. Again, a reminder, again, back to the 19.4 billion, that transit and transportation investment across roads, bus, rail, reminder about bus and rail. It's really important that distinction and providing a sort of an allocation to those pieces are part of this vision, making sure that we've got bus investment that allows us to extend and think about our better bus program, to add frequency on our corridors, the new advancement in microtransit. This is a unique time to actually dedicate funding for that program and certainly the the protection of rail for that for the long-term program within the context of the 19.4 billion. The rail program, though, or the transit program is much beyond that. It's the the 17.4 billion on the bottom. And so that includes the ability to get federal funding to advance those projects in partnership and and essentially allows us to extend those local dollars, use those local dollars as a match to extend our transit program and our investment beyond simply the 19.4 billion. What is a transition really to talk about what that means from a from a transit standpoint? It's certainly important that we recognize the fact that this is a new a new constraint, right? This this new funding strategy is a fiscally constrained program that thinks about our investment in a new way with a new constraint. That will require us certainly to think about the transit plan in a different way. That process will go on, and so certainly Brent can talk about this in more detail. But the notion is that we need to move forward and and provide a plan that is fiscally constrained, that understands the capacity of that financial program, but do it in a public process. There'll be a clear public process directed by the MTC. It's not a decision that has been made. It'll go through a sort of an extensive public process to update the transit plan within the context of that fiscal constraint. So it's this is not a decision that has been made. It's the first time that we've actually had a fiscal constraint around our vision. And so that public process will certainly happen to define that program and that new plan within that fiscal constraint. Last thing, just to transition to the action, we're really looking for you to do is is this notion around supporting the the resolution to to move forward, the the referendum and the the ask of the state legislature to afford our voters the ability to to approve a sales tax and to fund transportation projects in the region. Couple of things we want to make sure that's it's clear to you that it's not. It's not endorsing or or changing the 2030 plan. It's not determining that plan in any specific way. I just talked about the public process that we'll go through with that, and it's certainly not preempting that process. It's really just giving us the ability to take this conversation one step forward and and continue the ability to get funding for our mobility plan and ultimately make public transparent decisions about how we use those dollars to fund our transit vision. Quick sense of the timeline, we are still very early in the process, right? So where we've we've gone through the past year to develop the draft legislation to gain some support from the towns and the county to move forward. We're now in the process of of going through with the towns and the county to get a a public support for that so that we can reaffirm to the state that this is a vision, this is a strategy that the local jurisdictions support. But there are steps that act that that many steps that need to get there before we get to a referendum, right? So there's legislative discussion and consideration. There'll certainly be the transit plan update that will have to happen within that financial constraint. There'll be public engagement across all of those things, our strategic area plans and those those mobility projects that will be defined, and we'll go through a public process. So it's important to know that this is just the first step. It's a critical step so that we can continue the conversation around funding. There'll be engagement as we move forward and lots of opportunity to shape the ultimate priorities and and focus of these plans with the public as we get closer to a potential for a referendum. With that, a lot to cover there. I want to transition over to Sarah to talk a little bit more about the details of the legislation and a little bit more about the potential for a transit authority.
So good evening. Sarah Hazel, Chief Sustainability and Resiliency Officer. What I want to do is just hit on some of the high points that Ed described. And first, I'm going to start a little bit with what we gain related to the details of this draft legislation. So to reiterate, as a city, we get 100 million plus dollars in transportation revenue for complete streets. That represents 11% of our general fund, and that can investment can be significantly leveraged to support council's CBI efforts. So I wanted to pause on that. It advances our strategic investment areas, and it creates capacity and flexibility for other council priorities. And then on the transit side, it really creates the ability to fund a plan that has been unfunded. It more than doubles the current investment in transit from .5 plus an additional .4 for rail and .2 for bus. So that's more than doubling the investment this community would make in transit, and it's a 50% increase in the bus program funding annually. On the other side of things, it also protects city council's interests and the city of Charlotte's interests in a couple of ways. This is a one-of-a-kind piece of legislation, not only because it addresses multiple modes, so transit, transportation, but it also allows for this countywide sales tax to back the future transit debt instead of the city. This is really important and something that has not been done before for transit in North Carolina. It also really protects CATS employees by ensuring they transition to a new authority, keep their retirement best benefits as well, and so that is specifically written into the legislation. The other way that it protects the public transit customers is that if you look at the governance of the new authority, you can see that Charlotte has 12 of 27 votes, that's 44%. If you look at the existing MTC structure, Charlotte has 11% of the votes. So it's a more equitable way to better represent riders who are 90% live in in the city of Charlotte. The key piece here is really what's on the left, and this mirrors the resolution language. The draft legislation at its core is asking the General Assembly to allow Mecklenburg County to hold a referendum to ask voters if they would like to make a choice to put a 1% sales tax in addition to the current sales tax to be used for roadway systems and public transportation. So that is really the key piece of this legislation. It's important to note that there is specific referendum language in the draft legislation that you may have seen. So unlike the existing quarter cent sales tax that does not allow for specific language, voters will have a much clearer opportunity to understand what they're voting for at the ballot, and that is embedded in the legislation. It also clearly defines the red line as the priority. It does not define any other project, to reiterate what Ed was saying, but just delivers on the promise of the red line, and it also allows for the city to be reimbursed for the purchase of the red line in a time-bound manner. On the transportation and the revenue side, again, the road, 40% revenue distributed directly to the towns and city. And on the transit side, there's a limitation on rail at 40% and a minimum on bus at 20%, which really protects and really holds sacred funding for bus riders who are our core riders in our system. And then I'm going to talk a little bit more about the new authority. So one piece of this legislation is moving to an authority, but why does this make sense? This is not a new conversation that we've been having in the community ever since 2004. A UNC had a study that they gave to the MTC, and it suggested that if we are going to continue to advance transit in our region, a transit authority makes sense. The conversation has continued with the work around Connect Beyond and advancing the plan. And and to note, if you kind of go to the right-hand column, this new authority allows for expansion, so it does provide for the opportunity with additional revenue that other jurisdictions could join with that dedicated funding source, which, again, supports this regional vision. An authority also is really the the system of major urban transit systems in the country, so it's a best practice. It streamlines the dual roles right now that MTC and the city hold. And the 1998 sales tax, you know, has really grown our system from just a city department to a system with expansive bus, rail, paratransit, but bringing bringing this system into a new governance structure that streams streamlines roles and is a best practice is is the reason for moving to a new authority and the reason that this is outlined here in the draft legislation. So just for a visual, one governing board, all activities under the governing board. To reiterate, 12 city appointments, three representing business interests, 12 county appointments, six representing the towns, two state legislator appointments, one governor appointment. What that really recognizes is a couple of things. It recognizes that the state does have a critical voice in our infrastructure because it is regional in nature. It also represents and recognizes that every jurisdiction should have a voice in this system. And again, it it better reflects the ridership and better represents equity when it comes to the allocation of votes for the city of Charlotte and the county. And so if you go to the right-hand column here, so the .5 cents, which exists, and the .6 cents, which is really the .4 and the .2, equals 1.1 cent that could be governed under this transit authority if this were to come to fruition. It is very specific in the legislation that defines the transition and creation of the new authority. So there's a series of time-bound plans and reports and things that need to occur in order to responsibly transition and ensure that the city's protected as well as our transit riders are protected and the new authority is set up for success. And finally, one other important piece of this, it does require a supermajority vote for required expansion, which I think really does protect the integrity of what you see here. It would require a supermajority of all of the existing members to bring somebody new in and change the voting structure or change any of the bylaws. So before I hand it over to Brent, just a reminder, so for Action on September 3rd is a resolution, and all local jurisdictions are considering this resolution at this time. And at that, I think I will hand it over to Brent to talk more about the related topic of the red line.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I'm Brent Kegel, NRCO CATS. Thank you, Ed and Sarah. So as I get going on the red line, I want to talk a lot about the red line, but I also want to sort of step back a little bit to the transit plan. The red line is part of the transit plan and has been part of the transit plan for for many, many years. And when we start thinking about the red line and what it represents with the plan, the red line presents an opportunity for us to move forward with a project that has been part of the plan for decades. It also gives us the opportunity to start having meaningful conversations about funding the entire transit plan. However, we know that the current transit plan, as Mr. McKinney stated, is not fiscally constrained. And what that basically means is there's not enough money to pay for the plan, and that's been true for many, many years. So as we move through, the possibility of additional funding that the legislation would bring, the next step in the process is to develop a transit plan that is fiscally constrained. And that will be a process that will launch early or late this year, this winter, November, and really run through about July of 2025. That's a process led by the MTC and CATS and would engage the communities throughout that are affected by the transit plan to understand what their priorities are and how we can best meet their transit needs in a fiscally constrained way. And the red line, I think, provides us the opportunity to start and have that conversation. Oops, I went the wrong way. So the red line, city of Charlotte has been negotiating with or talking to Norfolk Southern since 2021. In 2023, the city and NS began negotiations for the purchase of the O-line. I want to take a minute to thank the team. We had a very capable team. We have Rob Martinez with Moffett and Nickel, but also a 20-plus-year veteran of Norfolk Southern in their properties, actually overseeing their properties group. We have Brad Thomas, our lead counsel for CATS, and we have Kelly Goforth, our chief development officer for CATS. They have put in literally thousands of hours with Norfolk Southern to come to where we are today and hopefully next week on the 3rd, and all the others on the team. It it really was a huge effort. The red line and the 2030 plan, it's a 20-year pursuit. It's fundamental, as I said, to the transit plan and to our ability to move any transit plan forward, and it's critical to the sales tax. It's also important to Charlotte. 11 and a half miles of the corridor, of the red line corridor, fall within Charlotte city limits. Four stations are in Charlotte, and we have already applied for a federal grant to evaluate and study equitable TOD opportunities along the corridor, including in Charlotte. And I'll point out that the DeRida Station is part of one of our designated corridors of opportunity. It connects Uptown's regional employment base and cultural destinations to the regional growth north, and it links Charlotte Gateway Station, which really is a critical multimodal station and economic hub to the rest of the region. So where are we at today? Today, we're really looking at corridor preservation. This is the first step in moving forward, and we can't go any farther without preserving this corridor. Norfolk Southern requires that this deal be closed on September 9th, no later. So again, that leads us to the timeframe we're talking about. But I also want to point out that corridor preservation is an FTA-recognized process that we've done before, actually several times. We've we did corridor preservation with the original Blue Line, and we did corridor preservation with the Blue Line extension. The reason it's called out as as sort of a special activity by the FTA is because it's time-consuming. It's hard. And so when these corridors come up, you do everything you can to preserve them for future use for transit, because if you miss the opportunity, you may not get it again. And and I think we know that, right? We've been trying to work with Norfolk Southern for over 20 years as we've had conversations about this corridor. The next step, there will be a phase where the city owns the corridor, but we are not operating commuter rail. And really, that's just the ability of the city to hold the corridor until such time that there's a transit agency or transit authority. At that point, the transit agency, the new agency or authority, would own and operate. So they'll own the corridor and they would engage in operating commuter rail. The draft legislation, again, ensures the city will be reimbursed for the purchase price. It requires a timeline on establishing an agreement for the asset transfer, and it it is clear that the transit agency or authority will be responsible for funding the design, construction, and operation of the red line as we move forward with commuter rail in the corridor. So how do how do, you know, what are the things that we did to get us here? Back in 2023, we received the big breakthrough. Norfolk Southern said they're willing to consider a possible transaction. That was that was a big change for us, and and we took that opportunity. On August 28, 28, 2023, we had a closed session where we reviewed and discussed the Norfolk Southern letter. We also had small group meetings with city council October 2nd, 2023. Leading into 2024, the city signed a non-binding purchase and sale agreement with NS, requiring at that time, a September 2024 closing. That was in March 20, on March 25th of 2024, when that closed session occurred. Recently, we've had more small group meetings in July and August of this year, the closed session on August 19th, bringing us here to the action review today. And moving forward to September 3rd, consideration by council, if successful, then a closing no later than September 9th. So what are the actions related to the red line that council will be asked to consider next week? The purchase and sale agreements, there are two PSAs. One is for the O-line or red line alignment. The second is for a small strip of land adjacent to or contiguous with the Charlotte Gateway Station. So let's talk about the first agreement. It is 74 million for the O-line to the Mecklenburg County border. It does, that is not to extend into Mooresville or Iredell County. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The second purchase and sale agreement is 17 million, and it's for the The second purchase and sale agreement is $17 million, and it's for the property adjacent to the Gateway Station. This is critical property for the red line because it is literally where the platform, where the terminus at Gateway Station will be. It's the platform ending the red line in Uptown. Another agreement that will be in front of council is the Comprehensive Rail Agreement. The Comprehensive Rail Agreement protects the city and future transit agencies' rights to operate commuter rail and defines the terms with Norfolk Southern for how we share use of the corridor. Some of the key provisions, it assigns, it allows us to assign the agreement in the future if there is a transit agency or authority, and it defines the terms of the agreement. It defines the commuter rail service rights. It defines the freight service rights. It provides compensation to either party between the two parties for use of the alignment. It gives the city or the transit authority the ability for maintenance, for determining how maintenance and dispatching of the line will occur. It establishes liability limits for either party. It also requires an insurance policy be entered into and placed. So I'll mention this a little bit. We are working with the city's risk management group to execute or to get quotes on the insurance policy. We have not received that yet, and we will not be able to close on an insurance policy by the 9th. So that's where the $10 million escrow account comes into play. In absence of the insurance policy, there is a requirement to place $10 million in escrow for any liability or claims. That escrow account is maintained only up until the point that the insurance is put into place. So it is a temporary situation while we seek or until we have placed insurance for the alignment. And then the Comprehensive Rail Agreement also provides the ability or an option to extend the line into Mooresville and Iredell County. That option is twofold. We can do either one of two things. Neither of these things are possible without express agreement and approval from Iredell County and Mooresville. But what it would allow us to do is either purchase the rest of the alignment or some portion of the rest of the alignment, either to Mountmore or the entirety of the rest of the O-line, or enter into an operations agreement with Norfolk Southern. And basically, the best way to describe that is it's an agreement that would allow commuter rail to utilize that section of track even if we don't own it, but we would pay on, in effect, a per-train basis for utilizing that segment of track. And then it also outlines the improvements necessary for commuter rail operation along the entire alignment. So where are we at? What has already been completed? On July 16th, the Planning Commission completed the mandatory referral process. And on August 16th, the Surface Transportation Board, which is a federal board, approved the agreement that we have, the draft CRA with Norfolk Southern. Next steps, August 19th was the closed session, today, the 26th, leading into September 3rd for the purchase and sale agreements and the Comprehensive Rail Agreements, and then September 9th or earlier, if possible, actual closing on the deal. I will note, because of the hard and fast deadline on the 9th, the September 3rd item is a no-deferral item for the red line. Additional agreements. It may be that there are additional agreements necessary. These agreements could come before the city, city council, or they may come before a transit authority or agency. It just depends on the timing of these, but I will mention them. There is an anticipated future agreement for construction, and that would cover construction phasing for the red line project and freight service, including Norfolk Southern mainline improvements. There is also an operating and crossing agreement with CSX, which would address the crossing of the CSX tracks by future commuter rail. And there is a Norfolk Southern operations agreement covering dispatch and maintenance responsibilities after commuter rail service begins. So again, just to reiterate, what should you expect to see on a request for council action on the 3rd? First, the two purchase and sale agreements. Second, the Comprehensive Rail Agreement. Third, an escrow agreement. And fourth, authorize the manager to negotiate and execute any additional documents required for closing by September 9th, 2024. Again, the schedule. And with that, I will stop right there, and I suppose there will be questions.
I think we're going to ask Mr. Driggs to comment and start us off, and we'll follow up.
The vice chair of the committee, Ms. Molina. And so, Mr. Driggs, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So colleagues, this is a pretty daunting proposition. We have a lot of information here. We need to process that and decide what is actually in the best interest of Charlotte. But as we do that, I notice just not to lose sight of the fact, this is huge. This is really exciting. We are not just sitting here and waiting to see what happens, which frankly is what happens in a lot of places. We need to kind of be proactive. So let's look at everything that we've heard in that context. Understand the implications of this plan are enormous, in terms of not just mobility, but economic development, jobs, employment, equity. It also ties in with our UDO, another major initiative. So frankly, I'm proud of the fact that we are looking as actively as we are ahead and trying to make conscious choices instead of just reacting. I will very briefly comment on a lot of what we've heard. In my mind, as I've said before, you can simplify this conversation quite a bit. There is no question that we need to make a large investment in mobility infrastructure. You can see it out on the roads. You can hear it. Understand that it's going to be a few years, if we move in this direction, before the improvements start coming online. And it's urgent. We need to be doing something now. That also means that we need to have a revenue source because our capacity to do the things we need to do from what we have is insufficient. And that led to, in 2021, the Mobility Task Force recommending as a revenue source the one cent sales tax. So now here we are, doing something about it, right? And what the legislation says is actually not that complicated. It says you may conduct a referendum for a sales tax. And understand what that means. That means nothing happens that the public doesn't agree with. Our challenge is going to be to take that authorization that we have and put something out there in the way of a plan that in November, or whenever that referendum comes up, the public agrees is good for us and worth paying for. Critical to understand that. It also specifies an allocation. So before, we were looking at 80% for transit or more, and we were looking at a smaller amount for other uses based on feedback from the legislature, which frankly, I don't find was bad advice. We're now going 60% transit with a maximum of 40% for rail. That means there's a substantial amount of money for bus in there, probably more than there would have been under the other plan. And so that's not a bad outcome. It also calls for the creation of an authority. We saw a slide, right? Charlotte needs for the authority to be created. It is in our interest not to have this dead on our books and to have a more representative governance structure for planning in the future and let that take place at a county-wide level. So we should be willing, get behind that. One issue that people have talked about is how come we only have 12 votes out of 27? You can't create a structure in which one of the municipalities has total control. And we've seen that in Cartco. The others aren't even going to show up, nor will they accept it. So that's why that's being done like that. It commits to the creation of the red line. We've heard the red line was in the plan earlier and didn't get built for 26 years. So the idea that there are winners and losers here and that the northern towns are winners is not completely fair. I do want to emphasize, too, what we heard. Once we have this plan, the plan is going to get developed after or during and after the approval of the legislation. And that plan is going to be worked out among all the members of the MTC. It's going to be subject to approval of the MTC, and it is not a Charlotte creation. Some of these allegations that Charlotte has done this or done that, where we are right now is the plan that we had before is still in place, includes the entire Silver Line. It won't change until the MTC votes to change it. What we're going to do, though, in the meantime, is come up with a proposed modified plan that operates within the bounds of the money that we're now expecting to get and therefore is achievable. That plan is going to be developed in consultation with all the members of the MTC, the towns, the public. We can have a summit. There is nothing in the legislation that actually limits us. It just says you will spend the money this way, but the rest of it is a planning process. It's going to be conducted here. And I think that's critical to note as well. We're not actually limited. We don't even have to offer the referendum. We want to take this step so that we have the possibility of a referendum. It doesn't impose on us the burden of offering a referendum. So we'll do that when the time comes and we feel comfortable about gaining acceptance. I think, I will acknowledge, since we're on this, I think we're all concerned about the position of Matthews and some of the things we've heard about their vote and that they have said. And I understand that totally. I would emphasize, no one says that BRT is just as good as rail. It isn't. I get that, right? And they were counting on the rail, and they're disappointed. The only thing I'll mention is, though, the change in the plan came about because of the legislature saying you can't have all that money for rail. And other than that, there hasn't actually been a change in the plan. The change in the plan that is implied by those constraints on the money will take place through our planning process. And that planning process will allow all of the members to advance their interests and make their case, and hopefully we will come out with something that best balances the interests of everybody. So as you can tell, I'm in support of this, even though I'm not normally the guy who would be here advocating for a tax, okay? And I will mention, I did vote against the budget because I was concerned about finances. But I believe this is an essential responsibility of city government. It needs to be paid for, and therefore, I hope that we will reach a good outcome here. That's all I want to say right now. I'm very interested to hear what anybody else has to say. I will point out, we have, what, a half an hour until we're supposed to go into the meeting?
Yes, to go into...
Please, everybody, try to leave time for each of us to say something. Maybe I just overstep.
Just a little. You're the chair. You get a little bit of leeway. All right.
We're used to 30-minute question-and-answer sessions.
So we're going to now ask the vice chair, Marjorie Molina, to address...
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. And I wouldn't want to dare attempt to try to repeat what the chair has explained. I think it was very comprehensive, his explanation around what is taking place, what's in front of us, what we're looking at as a possibility. I think it's important to state that this is huge for us potentially. If we do take this step as a body, I feel like it's something that would change the trajectory of our city and who we become. I guess I'll put a personal note. I'll preface with a personal note. I travel Independence Boulevard every day, multiple times a day. I am a mother with children in CMS, and they both go to magnet schools, so we don't have bus service. So I have spent more hours in traffic than I'd like to acknowledge. And so I know that there's so many different possibilities in what we do to mitigate some of those traffic, you know, issues that we've experienced across our city, not just in East Charlotte. And so, you know, today I was encouraged. I told the city manager I was driving down Independence, and I seen like a bus zoom past me in the middle lane. I was on my way to take my daughter to school this morning. I was like, wow, yay, you know? But it's encouraging where we are. And I will preface the statement and also say that, you know, speaking specifically from an East Charlotte perspective, I've heard from our neighbors and residents in East Charlotte who view the red line conversation as choosing a winner versus a loser. It is widely interpreted, although, you know, from this place, I've seen information. I know that's not the case because I understand what's in front of us, but it's widely interpreted that we're choosing the red line over the silver line, that we're putting a precedent over the red line or for the red line as opposed to the silver line. And I want to assure you that that's not what we're talking about. These are, you know, unfortunately, based on where we are operating from, we've been given a potential opportunity to have this information looked at by our state legislature, and this is what they would like in order to consider a possible referendum. And like my colleague said, this is something that the voters would ultimately say yes or no to. I do realize that there are some open-ended questions as a result of what's being presented. I read some articles this morning. I read my news. I don't watch it. So I read about three articles this morning, and I realized there are some open-ended questions around the silver line I read, and I thought that was very engaging. There are some open-ended questions around how it's determined based on what the actual authority would decide, and those are things that we have to leave open to the process. So I also, because this has been, you know, a conversation since 1998, and full disclosure, I was still in high school in 1998. So I, you know, but I do know that this is something that the northern towns have been waiting for. And everyone in our county has been contributing half a cent sales tax with the expectation that we would deliver on transportation. So now, at this moment in 2024, we have an opportunity with Charlotte taking a big risk, a big forward risk, to realize this potential opportunity. So I'll say that, and I'll leave the rest for my, you know, colleagues here on the council. But I just want to say that for the members of East Charlotte, this is the beginning of a conversation that has to be ongoing. This isn't specifically around the silver line, although that's also something that, like my colleague said, there's not been anything determined 100% that there's any emphasis being taken at this moment away from any silver line conversations, whether that be rail or bus rapid transit. I got to say that. And I'll leave the rest for my colleagues. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
I want to recognize Councilmember Watlington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. Just because there's a lot of information, I do want to make sure that the public walks away super clear on a couple of things. As far as the vote for an authority, that is separate and apart from the vote to purchase the red line. Is that correct?
Those are two separate actions, but on the same day.
Okay. My question was whether or not there were two separate votes for an authority and a purchase. And what I heard is that there are two separate votes on the same day. So for me, certainly, we'll want to continue digging into the makeup and the structure of the authority, understanding that that is a separate vote from the purchase. I do also want to just make clear for myself and for those that are watching, clearly we're leaning forward, as we've mentioned, on purchasing the red line to enable us for things in the future that haven't been decided. Can you just repeat for me, what is the city's position if the referendum is voted down, as it relates to the red line itself that we would have purchased by then?
Yeah, so...
Yes, so a little bit about that. We did move through the slides pretty quick, and I apologize. So the current plan of finance in the short term for the corridor will be a short-term, five-year, either note program or variable rate program that can then be assumed or taken out, replaced by the authority so that the city is paid back in its entirety. If the project does not move forward, we do know that this is an important corridor, right? There are only so many corridors in an urban area. And so we know that it has value. I'll also ask Rob to speak to that a little I'll also ask Rob to speak to that a little bit, knowing what he knows about Norfolk Southern and how the rail industry works.
He needs to come to the...
Simply just that the fact that it's extraordinarily difficult, as I believe all of you are aware, to assemble a corridor of this magnitude. And of course, here, the action that's going to be before the city is a 22-mile corridor through a very urban, completely urban district, which is virtually impossible to assemble from scratch. So I think it's an ideal opportunity for the city.
Does that mean we would sell it if the referendum went down? What would happen?
It certainly means that, so included in the CRA is we have the ability, if the project is not going to move forward, at some point we determine that we're no longer going to preserve the corridor, we can accept offers, we can put it up for sale. And Norfolk Southern has the ability to counter any of those offers.
And their openness to do that, we also wrote that into this, that's also written into the CRA, into the Comprehensive Rail Agreement.
Dr. Watlington, to your point, I go back to what Brent said earlier, not the first time that we've engaged in corridor preservation. That's the first step. And so let's just say that we get the authority, that'd be great. But we have a period of time to try to seek this authority also. So that's where the first step is corridor preservation. Again, the city owns, we don't operate anything.
Okay. So what's important to me is just as we purchase, obviously, that there's an abort plan. And it sounds like we would be in a position of some pretty valuable real estate if that was the case, and we would be able to get our money back essentially. And then the next question I had was, as it relates to community engagement, as the new plan is updated, I just want folks to make sure that they're very clear about their opportunity to engage in those decisions as they come.
Yes. So as we go through the process, there will be extensive community engagement. And I want to reiterate, the Silver Line, no decisions have been made one way or another on the Silver Line. What we know is the Silver Line is a very large project. It constitutes at least 50% of the current transit plan in dollars. And we know that the funding is not sufficient. So we will continue with a open process to engage the community in the MTC.
Thank you. And so lastly, I'll just say that there's been a ton of work that's gone into this. And so thank you to everyone who's been involved with this to date. It is a gargantuan task. The thing that I want to lift up and make sure that it's still a part of the conversation is that for me, this is only one side of the equation, right? We're talking about how important it is to invest in our infrastructure because we know that we have very real issues today. We also know that when we invest in rail, we invest in transportation, that is an economic development opportunity because people are going to come and build. And we know that with more buildings, then more residents, more users, and then we see ourselves in a constraint situation again. So I'd like to understand, what is it that we expect in terms of net organic growth as a result of this? And how does that impact the individual household that's paying taxes? Because I would hate for us to invest in this and then we end up in a situation where we're still seeing issues because we've got now new traffic on these roads or in this rail line. And we're also then going to have to come back to our residents in the future and ask for additional investment just to get whole. So that is a piece that for me is still missing, is to understand, yes, we would want to invest, but what is it exactly that we're expecting in terms of a benefit? I see the projects, but how are we thinking about smart growth and development that will not then put us in the same situation we're in today? Is that clear?
Absolutely. And I would say, Dr. Watlington, to some extent, the council has been thinking through that, through some of the commissions, committees that you've put together, the equitable development growth, as well as the anti-displacement. So we'll try to tie that all together to give you a better picture of that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Watlington?
Okay. Let's go to Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, let me say that I was one of the champions for the infrastructure discussion. So obviously, this is a need and we want to support this. I think we all understand the need for improvement. We understand the benefit from the, that we're going to receive from the at least $300 million per year. So that's very important. But we still are able to ask questions and we don't want to rubber stamp a deal. So I do have some questions. The first thing that we talked about earlier today during our session, did we, what's the appraised value for the red line?
Yes, ma'am. The city appraisal on the O-line corridor is 69.2 million. And the city appraisal on the Gateway Station properties is 15.9 million.
So what's that total?
Give me just a second.
69 and 15, 80, 80, okay. I asked for it earlier.
86.8 million, it sounds like.
So 86.8 is the appraised value. And the purchase price is 91 million?
Mm-hmm, it's 91.
Yes, ma'am.
We also talked about...
I think the manager wanted to address the...
All right, okay. Let's go to the slide, okay? Let's start off with apples to apples. Can we get the slide ed with the cost?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Everybody's down. Everybody.
Okay, go back one.
Like 27?
Okay. So we'll start off with this, Kelly Brent, as we're going apples to apples. So the $74 million for the segment that ends in Mecklenburg County, the appraisal on that piece is your what?
69.2 million.
Okay. And then on the, what I call the landing strip, which is not what I'm supposed to call it, the 17 million, the appraisal on that is what?
15.9 million.
Okay.
Those are the city appraised values.
Okay. The one thing that we cannot talk about tonight is values that are related to NS. But I do believe that we can say some things, Rob, about where we landed, can't we? Okay. So you, as this all goes through, they, there's a value, there is a value from one side that's higher than the value from the other side. And what you attempt to do is meet somewhere that's closer in the middle. And that's what we have attempted to do with this.
Okay, thank you. And then there was an option to buy the, I think it's, was it seven miles from, in Iredelle County? Was that also an option? Okay, and what is that purchase price?
17.75 million.
And what's that appraised value?
I would need to get that for you. I don't have it right here with me.
Okay. And just for the record, I did ask for these numbers, to be very clear, so that we wouldn't have this dysfunction or confusion on council. I did ask for these so we could compare apples to apples. Thank you. Also, the, we're going to be sharing the rail with Norfolk and they'll still use it for freight, is that correct?
Yes. They will have a right to operate the existing freight operations that they have. They're minimal.
Okay, thank you. We discovered, I think during our transportation meeting, that there was a $50 million contract for the company to design the Silver Line or to analyze the Silver Line. How much of that contract, how much has been spent?
As of a week and a half ago, during the public records request, I believe it was 43 million.
43 million. So what happens with the other 7 million?
It hasn't been spent.
And it will not be spent, or what will happen?
We would certainly, yes, before we would spend those dollars, we would want to engage in a process to understand the transit plan and what it would have in store for the Silver Line.
Okay, so we're still, so that company, we're still engaged with them and they're working, continuing to do work for us?
They have $7 million remaining on the contract. They are not actively doing work today, or I believe it's very minimal amount of work that they are doing because of the uncertainty around the Silver Line. But in the future, as we have better certainty, then it may be that we enter into a new contract, or it may be that we continue using the existing contract.
Okay. Thank you. Will this route, will it go all the way to the airport? Is the proposed plane...
The Silver Line?
Yes, to go all the way to the airport, okay. Is there an option that we, and I know the Silver Line, we say that there's no final decisions that have been made. Is there an option that East Charlotte and Matthews could have a rail line? I'd like to see us continuing to discuss that.
So in the transit plan, we will first start by looking at the Silver Line, which is the largest project in the plan. So again, the Silver Line in the transit plan has not been removed as rail. As we go through this, the first thing that we would want to do is look at, are there cost-saving opportunities associated with the project as rail that could make the project financially feasible? That will be very difficult because the Silver Line itself to Matthews, uptown to Matthews, is approximately $6 billion. The rest of the alignment is another 2 to 3 billion. So together, the Silver Line constitutes a very large share. But the first thing we will do is look at, are there cost-saving opportunities? The second thing, if the answer is there are cost-saving opportunities that could bring it into financial feasibility, will be really to ask the question, is that a project that we would want? And the "we" is the community. Because we may have to cut so much of the Silver Line as to make it not a project that is, that is really the desire of the community anymore. And then we would start to look at alternatives like bus rapid transit.
So Councilmember Driggs said that in 2021 is when we started the discussion about the one cent sales tax. That's almost tax, that's almost five years ago. So things have changed, you know, prices have increased. Is it possible that we could approach the legislators with a different amount that would include East Charlotte and possibly Matthews? And we don't have to have that answer today. I just, I just, if there's a way, I think Dr. Watlington brought up a great point. If we are going to be increasing the value with this, with the rail line, does that create a larger disparity with East Charlotte and Matthews? So I just think that those are things we should think about. If there is a way that we can truly make this a regional project, then I would be willing to support this. We talked about public engagement. And this is what happens, we have to make a decision next week. And I heard numbers like 1998, we've been talking about, you know, one of the projects. In 2021, we've been talking about the other projects. So I would have liked to have seen more public engagement instead of the week of the meeting for them to have an opportunity to give us their feedback. And I understand the city staff, you all do great work, but we are the ones that are accountable to those residents. So, and I mentioned that to you before, Mr. Jones. So I think this would have been a great opportunity for, if we went into contract in March, for us to be able to talk to the public and hear from the public sooner than this. I think that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm usually the last one, but I'm going to be very quick because I know we've got some colleagues. I think my question is, one is for Dana, City Manager. Can we get a good feel where our Mecklenburg delegation is? I mean, this is very important as we move forward to kind of check their temperature because I know in Raleigh, they're going to kind of look at the delegation so we can kind of judge, I think it'd be helpful. I would say this, I know how district reps feel, so when I looked at page 27 slide, I saw that the red line touches in three districts. District 2 at the Gateway, make sure I get this right, Councilmember Johnson. District 4, Dorada. Harris, North Carolina, 115, is that District 5? Or is District 1?
Look, she's like, "Oh, me."
Ah, okay. Oh, y'all share, okay. And then Eastfield's in District 4, correct? And so I guess my point is, in staff, we always say, can you show us the district that would touch on projects like this? And last but not least, I would share this and I'm going to date myself, but in 2015, we took a trip to Denver, Colorado, about eight elected officials and about 40 business leaders. And our whole goal was to look at their regional transit system. And I was just so amazed how Denver was the big city, but played a very important part in regional transit development. I see us kind of having that same model. Charlotte is playing a role in a regional transit development. So I got excited in 2015 and here we are in 2024, knocking on the door. I want to remind everyone this, when people compare Atlanta to Charlotte, first thing they always say is, "We don't like ATA but cost of transportation." So here we are, being Charlotte, trying to grow up. Mr. Driggs, to your point, trying to be proactive and create a transportation needs for our community. So thank you, Madam Mayor Protem and Mayor Ford.
Thank you, you did a great job.
And so now we go to Tari.
Thank you. I don't know what my position is on this yet, but the good news is I have a week to figure that out. So I'll work on that. I'll just give you just a quick kind of look into what my thinking is right now. And it's probably similar thinking to how average voters will be learning about it if they get to the ballot and look at it. They'll be thinking at that time, which is also an important lens for us to put on it. I think on the first part is, is this the time to be raising taxes? And it's on the back of the fact that our economy is struggling right now in many ways. And we wake up and hear about employers laying folks off, the fact that we just raised taxes in the budget. And then most importantly on this one, this is a regressive tax. It impacts and sits on the backs of those that can least afford to do it. So that means one important thing. It doesn't mean we can't do this, it means we've got to get it right. It's got to be designed well and it's got to make sure it delivers the kind of ROI, particularly to those who are funding this and who are impacted by it, get those benefits. So I, you know, as I'll struggle with this over the next week, I'll be thinking about that. And I'll also be thinking about the point of, what does it look like to get it right? I know a lot of people have put a lot of hard work for decades into all of this, but I can't help but be concerned that it falls into kind of a similar trap that we have here in Charlotte, where the vast majority of effort is spent on kind of presenting and justifying why we need the money. A little bit of effort is then spent on allocating it and negotiating the buckets of money. And then beyond that, the only time that's been spent on anything is really design of light rail and particularly the Silver Line. So what I don't want to happen is to become known as the most cutting-edge city in the entire world for investing in 20th century technology and innovation. But that requires us to put the kind of time we put into designing the Silver Line and looking at rail and justifying our budget needs and negotiating with towns to come together and design what a plan of the future looks like and skating to where that puck is going to be. And that also means a lot of honesty around the tables that... And that also means a lot of honesty around the tables that do this, that all of the angst and passion you hear around light rail and Silver Line and this, it's primarily driven by the fact that people understand, as they look at South End, the economic impacts. That's a real, true fact of the matter, but it's always hidden as we talk about moving people in congestion and this being a transportation-based solution. So I think we have to call a spade a spade. I think we have to actually have that plan. I don't believe, Mr. Manager, that that plan will be available in the next week as we make the decision. So I think the point is, this is a big enough and important enough decision that you can't just take a position to be anti or for just on a whim. So I think the only thing that's left is the governance model. And the governance model, not only does that, you know, help us pave the way with the towns and then the General Assembly, it, it gets us back to the, when the voters, who are smart when they look at these items and do vote against things. When they voted against the sales tax for the arts, they recognize the fact that, was there need? Sure. Is there need here? Sure. But the point was, they smelled out the fact that there wasn't a really strategic, smart plan in place to make that investment have a good ROI for everybody. And so the same things that I'll be struggling over in the next week, I think are relevant because they're the same things that the voters, when they hit that referendum, if by some miracle it makes it that far, doesn't mean it's a foregone conclusion. I'll end with just saying one point. Whether you're for it or against it, colleagues, I don't think there's any scenario you can decouple your decision on the red line with supporting this draft legislation and moving forward. Because if you were yes on the red line and no on that, that's a bad indication of us holding the bag for something really important. So I, no matter where you're, and I'm, I'll be thinking along those lines, but if you have a problem with that governance model, like I do or any other topics, now's the time to figure it out, because once we move forward on this tight timeline with the red line, we'll be holding the bag at that point. And there's a lot of possible pros in that, but I have a lot of negatives and cons in my mind on how that could end up being a debacle. So we have a lot to figure out in a short amount of time. I appreciate the work that's been put into date.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first, let me take a moment to celebrate an important milestone here. When it comes to red line, this is something that our predecessors have tried delivering for decades now. So this shows the progress that's been made by staff, Mr. Jones, and the entire team. This is transformational. While I celebrate that, there are certainly some concerns that I have as well. This, this will probably be the biggest project in the state's history. We are looking at 16, oh, $25 billion, probably the largest investment in the state's history. This is transformational. And as someone who has been a product of public transportation, who, our family did not own a car for many, many years, and we relied on a public transportation to get from point A to point B, whether it was doctor's appointment, grocery store, or getting to college and schools, I am absolutely in support of the public investments in our infrastructure. But I think the question that we have to ask here, yes, we are creating a legacy of quality of life that Mayor mentioned, but really the question here that we have to ask ourselves, are we creating two cities? Are we creating two cities where one part has, has an access to more efficient and effective transportation and one part does not? Just by looking at this, because it is financially constrained, I cannot say that we are not creating two cities. And that's the part I have concerns about. And this is not just about Matthews. This is also about the East Side, which I have represented in the past. And as an East Side resident, I'm concerned that we are leaving part of our city without having an efficient and effective transportation option. Well, I do hear the argument that, well, this is going to be left up to the transit authority to decide. But this is a math problem. We know there is not enough funding. And the portion, the Silver Line, that goes from uptown to Matthews, it is expensive. So we cannot say that, yes, this is going to be left up to the transit authority to decide when we know that we are not going to be able to deliver on the promises that we made. And, and I have a difficult time getting on board with a plan. You know, I, I read an editorial this morning in the Charlotte Observer about the city of Charlotte has one chance to get this right. And we gotta make sure that the one chance that we have, we get this right. And we do not leave a segment of our city where they do not have the equal access to the public transportation that other parts do. I hear Mr. Driggs' argument about winners and losers. Yes, red line is not a winner because this has been in the plan. We were supposed to deliver this decades ago. I get it. But I can certainly see, no one is a winner, but the East Side and Matthews is a loser because they are not getting equal share, equal access to public transportation that other parts would have. Couple of questions for staff. What response has, has been by other counties to buy into the fund to expand and build out our future connections in other counties?
So Councilmember, Mr. Mayor, I'll try. The, I think everybody's familiar with Connect Beyond and advancing the plan. And I, I won't speak for the mayor. I did attend a bunch of meetings that she attended with a number of jurisdictions trying to figure out how to build, I guess, a authority, whether you call it, I guess it was a jellyfish model and a muffin model. You know, how can you bring jurisdictions together to have a, a regional system? One of the struggles has been, and I'll stop with this, is that Mecklenburg County, the city of Charlotte and the six towns already have the 1 half cent sales tax. And a lot of jurisdictions around us do, do not have that. So how do you begin to build some type of a mechanism where there are some jurisdictions with funding and some without? I think that the state of North Carolina allows any county to have somewhere between a quarter cent and a half cent sales tax for transit, not the quarter cent that's just for anything that you, you could, but you can't say what it is on the ballot. And I think six of the 100 counties have taken advantage of that. So I, I guess the, the point being is that as you start to think about bringing other jurisdictions along, how do you do it in such a way that there are resources associated with those jurisdictions, if that helps?
Thank you. So I wanted to follow up on Councilwoman Johnson's question, where she asked a question whether the Silver Line will go to the airport. I just want to make sure that we are, that we have an accurate answer. The way I understand this, the Silver Line, it's not going directly to the airport. It is within a mile or two. Am I correct?
The Silver Line will have an airport station, and that airport station will be on airport property at the corner, right now it's planned for Josh Birmingham Parkway or Little Rock, Wilkinson Boulevard, and in effect, where Little Rock Road becomes Josh Birmingham Parkway. It does not go directly to the terminal, but it is on airport property and will be connected, as Ms. Gentry has talked about, the aviation director, via another separate train that would bring the passengers on into the airport. This is the, this is sort of the way that airports, because of how the runways are arranged, this is how other airports have solved for that problem in other, in other cities. And there are some other benefits to that arrangement or that alignment as well.
So I was in Chicago, and that was exactly what happened. You go so far.
And then you take a shuttle, yeah.
Yes, you take the shuttle. And I mean, they moved, I think something, thousands and thousands of people that way.
But I'm also seeing airports where, where trains directly go to the terminal. So you can see both examples, but I just wanted to make sure that there was an.
Thank you.
You got the answer, that you.
Most of the airports, that that is true. The runways are aligned differently, allowing for the infrastructure of light rail to go directly to a terminal. But some of that is the previous infrastructure alignment. So I, I was not trying to hide the answer or anything else. In my view, as the former aviation director and now as the interim CAT CEO, the Silver Line and the airport will be connected in a very high, creating a very high level of service for all of the passengers who choose to use it. And I hope there are many, many who will.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel. So I read this in one of the articles where NC DOT said, North Carolina Department of Transportation said that the true BRT, the true Bus Rapid Transit may not be feasible at this time because there is no room for stops on Independence. Is that correct?
So I, I am not saying that that person was incorrect. What I am saying is, before I start my answer, let me, let me preface with whoever the gentleman was who said that was, was absolutely correct. I, I think there are different views on that. What I would say is, as someone noted, we were really excited today. The bus lanes reopened on Independence. And it was great. The bus lanes are there. They are planned to be possible managed lanes in the future. But again, that project was predicated on the idea that they would never be used for Bus Rapid Transit or Light Rail. So what I would say is, before I think it's fair to say absolutely not, CATs would need to have further conversations with NC DOT as we go through the transit plan update to see what is possible. And I will say, I think there were other quotes from other NC DOT folks who reflect that to say they are willing and ready to have conversations with us about what that would look like in the future.
Yeah, and, and, and thank you, Mr. Kegel, because that raises further concerns. Because even when we are looking at going from light rail to Bus Rapid Transit, we're not really considering a true BRT because of the constraints that's, that's there based on NC DOT. In terms of dedicated lanes, where they will have to navigate through the traffic to get to a stop, are there, is there space for stops to be created? So it can be a true BRT concept.
A true BRT will have a dedicated right-of-way, and that is what we will evaluate. A dedicated right-of-way, not an enhanced bus service type of thing. And as we evaluate that, 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 that would be the option, whether it be in the middle of Independence or the exact same alignment that the current Silver Line has identified. Both of those things are possible. And, and none of those are, are ruled out because we need to do the work to evaluate all of those options.
Councilmember, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So Brenna, I, I think it's really important, if you would just emphasize what a dedicated right-of-way is and what would be considered gold standard BRT. Because if we haven't seen it, we don't know what it looks like. And all we can do is imagine a bus in competition with a bunch of other vehicles.
Yeah, a dedicated right-of-way, so a true, a full BRT implementation, the hallmarks of those, number one, there aren't any in the United States. The best we have is probably a bronze medal, so to speak, using the Olympics as, as a guide, right? If you start to think about in the world, though, a dedicated or a full BRT is going to have specialized vehicles that are high-loading and come into a dedicated station similar to a light rail station or a platform. And they will have a full dedicated guideway. The difference in that is there's no track, but there is a guideway that is dedicated for both directions of travel. Not, not a, not the bus lane. The bus lane is great, and, and we love it, but it is not just the bus lane.
Certainly, there is a lot to learn about what true BRT is. I'm certainly learning. I watched the videos from Miami, and there were a few other resource articles. But at the end of the day, Mr. Driggs is right. We can say that BRT is the same as the light rail. That's the bottom line. But I guess at the end of the day, what we have to strive to do is get closer to delivering a true BRT. And the concerns that I had, because when I read North Carolina Department of Transportation Deputy Division Engineer Sean Epperson told Transit Time, that it's too late for BRT to be part of the expansion, which could begin in four years, in quotation, there will not be space along the express lanes for any stations or accommodations to get pedestrians to the center of the roadway for stops of any kind.
So, so Mr. Epperson, I respect everything that he said, but he is making one key assumption that may not be accurate and is very important. If we look at a true BRT, again, the Silver Line couldn't be accommodated the way that he's talking about because it has a dedicated guideway that is not on the Independence Freeway. If we are doing BRT, we will also evaluate that exact same alignment. Now, there are options, but again, his statement is sort of predicated on the idea that we would be utilizing the bus lanes on Independence. And that has never been the plan for the Silver Line and would not need to be the plan for a BRT alignment as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel. If I may, I, I have a lot of, I mean, I had 20 questions, but most of my questions were addressed. Well, that means I did my homework. Yeah, I mean, I, most of my questions were addressed in the afternoon session that I was in as, with Councilwoman Johnson. Okay, I guess that's all I have. I might have something later on, which I will ask Mr. Kegel. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Well, we're, we're, we are going to stay here. No, we are going, everyone will have an opportunity to speak. We're not.
So, no. Feel free.
I don't think we need to rush because.
No, we're not. We're not rushing.
Take your time.
Yes.
Y'all are a piece of work. Okay. Lots and lots and lots of information. On a, on a more serious note, I had been in meeting with Councilmember Mayfield and just listening to her, because she is seasoned and was really leading the conversation on 8/19 when we were here, when it was only two people present. Just kidding. Enough to have a quorum, though. But I want to go back to, Mr. Mitchell said that they've been working on, Councilmember Mitchell said, we've been working since 2015. I, I know it's probably before that to get a resolution, so we know that we're in 2024 now. So that transportation has certainly changed. I have been living in Charlotte my entire life. I have seen everything that there is to see as growth, transportation. And being someone that was, you know, born in a less privileged neighborhood, I come from poverty. It's no secret, Southside Homes still exists on the corner of Remount Road and South Tryon. That's my humble beginning and my foundation. And so everybody in that community use the bus. And when we use the bus, I'm 53, so when we use the bus, I guess age probably in the early 70s. My mom would get me on, on the, on the public transportation bus. And so just think about when I rode the bus, and we thought that it was the best thing ever. Getting around, going to Eastland Mall. Getting around, going to Eastland Mall, going to the skating rink and everything that was over there. I'm going somewhere with this, stay with me. Clearly, we need a different mode of transportation to be able to move forward in this city and to grow this city. Now, I'm doing my homework, lots of it. And I want to give a thank you to the economic team, which is Mr. Driggs, Melina, Graham and Johnson for all of your work and what you do over in that department. It clearly takes a team to be strategic, to work together and bring back the things that we need so we can move it forward for our community to be able to clearly understand. So I did ask Mayor Pottin about the strategic investment team because I wanted to know. And then she explained to me that there were 19 strategic investments. I would like to see what those are. I really do. Yes, uh-huh. I want to know what those are. And then I would like to also see how we're going to do CBI and contracting, what the data, what the percentage is for minorities to be able to get involved in that, because that's very, very important and dear to me. I also want to point out that I heard extensive community engagement, as if I don't wear community across my chest because I know I do. So I want to know if someone can explain to me, from your standpoint, what community, extensive community engagement would be since we have seven days for me to make a solid, informed decision, to be able to communicate to my constituents and all of these emails that I got concerning this project. So I just want to know what extensive community engagement would look like to the community and constituents. Because I remember the last time we had extensive community engagement, it was on the Panthers vote. And when we went to go vote and we used the data, then I got conflicting information that that data that we put out on the website for them to vote that we couldn't necessarily use that because we didn't know if it was accurate and coming from the city of Charlotte or surrounding areas for people that will be actually influenced or affected by the stadium. So I wait on extensive community engagement.
Yeah, so we didn't, let me clarify. Extensive community engagement comes as we start to develop the updated or revised transit plan, starting in late this year, November, running through, we anticipate, July. But that is to update the transit plan ahead of a possible referendum for the voters, not ahead of next week.
So this would happen before November 5th? That's the election. I'm just, I want to get mentally prepared.
Correct. As we start to pull together the plan for updating the transit plan, the first phase will be to work with the MTC in November, December of this year, and then engage the community and stakeholders starting approximately in January of 2025 through, we anticipate, July of 2025, ending with an updated transit plan for consideration and approval by the MTC ahead of a possible referendum in November of 2025.
Okay, November 2025, so it's November next year, okay. And so two separate votes. I heard Dr. Wallace and say that we're going to have two separate votes. And those two separate votes are going to take place on September 3. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Supposedly, on that Tuesday when we come back. Because September 2nd is Labor Day, we're off, but we'll meet on that Tuesday, right? September 3rd is that our proposed date to vote? Okay, so I want to go back to an article that I read in detail, which really caught my attention. And I wouldn't, I have known if Councilmember Mayfield didn't bring it to my attention when we were in the meeting. And so I'll just summarize it, but if you Google it, it comes up. It's the U.S. accuses Norfolk Southern of delaying Amtrak trains and the schedules. And they are in big trouble for that. They're doing it right now. This article just came out. It's a new article that came out in July of 2023. And I just want to be sure that when we move forward with something that's going to be so strategic and should be effective for our community, that one, that gets resolved. Like, we cannot have transportation that's going to move people about this city effectively and efficiently and then deal with what they're dealing with. So I know anytime the U.S. versus someone, that's a big deal. Of course, I know why. We don't need to go into those details. But whenever the U.S. versus someone, they've done their investigation extensively. So that's a concern for me, that there are fines out there, there are questions out there. And they say it's been a continuation, that they continue to do this. So that's something that caught my eye. I wanted to read it. The economic impact, how we move people affluently around this community, yes. There are too many cars on the road. I live in Steel Creek and all I get is on 160. What are we going to do out there? When is it going to happen? We know that that's a North Carolina Department of Transportation road, but I need to tell my constituents what are we trying to do to serve that? The bus doesn't go out there. It goes to the outlet and that's about it. You know, there's not, CATS doesn't effectively move around Steel Creek. So it looks good. And I'm not saying one way or another where I support it or not, but I just want to have all my facts and make sure that we're digging into what are we getting into, because there's no turning back. I think Tark said, we got, right now, we're on a catch 22. The scales are unbalanced. And so I want to be effective and there's no I N team. Of course, everybody bringing their expertise to the table, to the dais, and they say effectively, I know Mr. Driggs is for it. He supported it. And I'm not saying I'm against it. And that's not what I'm saying at all. But from this conversation, we know when everybody say what they say, then the media put their spin on it because I understand exactly what I'm voting for. And it's not my vote. My vote is for the people that put me in this seat. And I say that every time I come here. And so I'm going to be consistent. I'm going to be consistent when it comes to relaying my information back to my constituents. So I have some questions unanswered. I told Mr. Driggs I would speak with him. He's an expert. And he sound like he summarized it pretty good. It's comprehensive. It's abstract, it's detailed, all of that, I get it. But for someone that just rides the bus and come to me and say, Councilmember Brown, can you please explain to me what you guys are doing with the transportation and mobility plan? How do I effectively communicate to that person that I understand what their concerns are? And how can I make them understand what we're doing that's going to benefit them? Because that's what these 11 positions are. The seven districts and the four at large, okay? I'm listening.
I will say, and I think that unfortunately, we probably, not necessarily tonight, should spend more time talking about all aspects of the current proposed legislation. Local bus is the backbone of every transit system in the United States, probably everywhere. And I know, rightly so, we've talked a lot, spent a lot of time talking about rail and some of the big projects. But local bus at 20% of the funding, that's about $69 million a year. That represents about a 50% increase in available annual funding. This is per year for improvements to our bus system. And every system is just that. It needs rail, it needs a lot of modes, multi modes. But local bus, things like micro transit, the increase in revenues will also make a measurable difference in our ability to provide better frequencies, to enhance local bus service, to add modes that enhance local bus service, like micro transit across the region. And so I hear what you're saying and you're right. For a lot of folks, they may not be right on that rail line. But what is in it for them? And I would urge us not to forget the improvements to bus that come along with it as well.
Yeah, I totally understand. We want to be able to move effectively. We have a lot of business people that come through the city that go to the airport. That's our big moneymaker. We know that millions of dollars. Airport is the biggest moneymaker in the city of Charlotte. And so we want to make sure that we can move those business folks that are coming into our city, from the airport to wherever they need to go in our city, effectively and efficiently. I get that. But I also don't want to forget, kind of similar to what Councilmember Ashmir said, how are we going to support the people that may not even touch that?
Yes, ma'am.
That transportation mode, right?
It really is through local bus.
Okay, yeah, okay. And so that's fine. I got to, I know all my questions may not be able to get answered. And then one last thing I wanted to really bring to attention, the tight timeline. Every time we get ready to get on a critical vote, and I know we got to be moving, we got a thousand things that we got to do. But every time there's a critical vote, it seems like our back are against the wall. We don't have enough time to research, to get the answers that we're looking for. And then to me, I feel like I'm making a decision that's not really informed. And I really want to be intentional as I move forward. And I'm learning what I do for my constituents. I really want to make sure that, you know, we don't feel like it's crunch time. Like now, I looked at, I know 6:45, I know we're not rushed. That was for the racket, but we have an agenda when we come in. And the timeframe is there. And you look at it, you're like, there's no way this is going to happen in that amount of time. So I, you know, my hat's off to the staff. The staff do an amazing job. I'm straightforward when I ask my questions and just try to figure out what we're going to do. Yes, something needs to be done, but we need to be effective in whatever we do. And that is all of the points hit, crossing our i's, I cross in our t's and dot in our i's and making sure that when we communicated each of us to our constituents, because they're going to have questions and we can't, we're not going to be able to satisfy everybody. Let's be crystal clear on that. But the path that we choose needs to be most effective and looks like it makes the most sense for everybody, even if they're in, because we all know that we can agree to disagree. But we want to make sure that the decision that we're making makes the most sense for the entire city of Charlotte and those that are going to use it and those that are not. And so that's all that I have. Okay, thank you.
All right, and now we will.
Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the presentation, answering a lot of our questions. And thank you, colleagues, for asking questions that get us to the point for real conversation. Ms. Manager, I've shared with you, I also have concerns. So I will share that I share the concerns of my colleagues of the timeline of this information coming before us. But I do have a couple of questions. Mr. Manager, just for clarification, you were mentioning that the CRA, we have a timeline in which the project must start?
No, I'm sorry. So what I was saying is, I think the question came up about not getting the sales tax passed.
If they were not to, yeah.
Correct. And we would love to be successful the first time out. But within this five-year period, there could be more than one bite at the apple. But again, we would love to be successful the first, if given the opportunity, the first time that we went to the ballot.
So I appreciate that because colleagues, we also have to remember, even there's only probably one person that's sitting around the dais that was here during that time, we went. There was a time that we had a conversation about what is now our arena uptown. And it was not supported by the community. Council moved, he ain't sitting over there. The council wanted to move forward. They put on a referendum, the community voted against it. Different council came in. Number of council members lost their seats behind it. Different council came in, they moved forward with it. We've seen the impact of economic boom. That is not to give an example, to think that you have my yes on this. That was just, it can't happen where we have to figure out what's the best decision. I do have a question for staff. And as you're making, and it's probably going to be for you, Mr. Cagle, but as we're making our way forward, the mayor mentioned Chicago. So I was also in Chicago, I think, in June for a conference. When I grabbed my bag out, my check bag, I actually walked a little distance and climbed onto a train. That train then took me all the way that I needed to go because that train ride was $5 versus the $50 that it would have cost. Because in case y'all forgot, we work a four-time part-time pay job. So opposed to paying $50 for Uber or a car, that train took me all the way where ultimately I had another, I'd say, eight-minute walk to the actual hotel. So there is a way, as we are growing the airport, as we're talking about the additional parallel, as we're talking about possibly a tunnel at some point, where it seems like we've been having this conversation long enough. And as was mentioned by my colleagues, the transition of just the last five years, the amount of growth that we've had at the airport as far as the number of passengers locally that are leaving out of Charlotte, not just being a leg airport where that transfer airport, that might be something where the question is, Mr. Cagle, have we gotten too far down the line of this conversation, specifically regarding the line that we'll be going to the airport to say that that is not a consideration versus stopping it for me to then get off the train with my luggage? Let's just say I have the full gamut. I'm checking two bags plus my carry-ons to then have to transfer to some other form of transportation?
The current plan for the airport station, and I'm going to stick with where I was before. There is an airport station. The current plan puts the airport station approximately one mile from the terminal. As we have looked at that with the airport, the closest possible it could be is possibly three quarters of a mile to a half a mile. And so as we start to think about the traffic congestion improvements that can also be made at the airport by putting the airport terminal station at Wilkinson and the other improvements, I would say that, yes, this is something that we and the airport have put a great deal of time into. And there is a lot of thinking on the benefit side to it. And I will urge folks, there are many airports that utilize a connecting system like what we're talking about. And it is a very high level of service. Phoenix is one of them, if you've been to Phoenix. And there are others as well. There are clearly airports that have terminal stations. National Airport in DC is one of those. But they have different layouts for their runways and roadways than we do. They don't have a cul-de-sacking terminal is really the biggest issue.
Okay.
Councilmember?
Yes, sir.
Mayfield, piggybacking on what Frances said, I think it's extremely important. And I may fumble this a little bit and Councilwoman Bakari will correct me. So I think it's two facets. One is there are opportunities, whether it's the MTC or new agency, authority, what have you, to look at all of these different corridors to see what can occur with it. But I think what's also important is the 20% that's related to bus. Let's just not think about it as bus, but as micro transit, as all those things that we have been talking about to move people around. And let's not forget about technological advances and how can we harness innovation to move people in a different way.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. I appreciate that. But going back to the sharing of her childhood that Councilmember Brown mentioned, being able to catch the bus from West Charlotte and be able to get to Eastland, even though I'm not a native Charlottean, I've been here since 1988. There's a very different conversation. I'm like, I feel like I am a native at this point. So what we have to recognize is a lot of those community and neighborhood routes with different leadership in the role that Mr. Cagle is now in. He's inherited a lot of those neighborhood routes that have been reassigned and/or ended. So it makes it a little difficult to try to say how this benefits those who are more likely to use the public transportation because it's not just a convenience, it is a necessity in order to get from point A to point B. When we look at opportunities that we missed along the blue line and what we were creating and the individuals who have a vehicle versus the individuals who once lived there who would have benefited the most off of the transportation. When we look at under that umbrella, it's difficult for me to say, hey, this is a great thing, knowing that there was a time because I lived off of Sharon Road West and I was able to take public transportation to get over to Eastland. When we had Eastland, we had the ice skating rink, we had all the things. Even if you wanted to today, you can't. So when we're talking about bus rapid transit, of which I've spoken to you directly about it, unless we have those designated lanes, it is. I've spoken to you directly about it, unless we have those designated lanes, it is very difficult for that to be truly accessible. And even with those designated lanes, you gotta have a way to get off. If I wanted to take the public transportation to get to Bojangles, so that way we don't have to have to deal with the parking, if I wanna get to Uffens, I can't take transportation. This new bus that's running, even though it's running down its own private lane with concrete on the sides, you're playing Frogger to try to get across. Independence, which people do every day, unfortunately, trying to get from one side of Independence to the other. So when we're having this conversation, I wanna make sure, to the best of our ability, that we're having as much transparency as we possibly can. Mr. Cagle, if we go back to Slide 16, well, you know what, don't move it. I'm sorry, go back to right where we were, right there. Page, Page 16, Slide 32. So we're saying right here, the 74 million is to get that line. Here's the question that I have. So Huntersville, Cornelius, and Davidson are also going to have to put money, put a referendum on their ballot for the county, or we're saying the county taxes, because Davidson, Cornelius, Huntersville are all part of Mecklenburg County. So if we move forward with this, we're talking about the city. So once you get out of Charlotte proper city limits, and you get into the county, what, do we know what amount they're contributing to this?
So the state of North Carolina cannot tell you where the point of sale is for a sales tax. What they can tell you is what's collected in the county. So we'll know how much the countywide sales tax generates.
Okay, so just for clarification, because the county passed their budget, they had an increase in their budget. I don't remember the actual breakdown. But did Mecklenburg County have a designated amount that was just for transportation?
So the, when the MTC was formed back in the late 1990s, because of what I just said, that you really can't tell which jurisdiction within the county where the sales tax is generated, there was a formula that doesn't really indicate much of anything. So I guess if you ask me again, I'm going to say the same thing. We don't know the exact amount that's collected in each jurisdiction.
The way this works, Charlotte is buying for its own account piece of land. What is in the legislation is that piece of land will pass to the authority, and we will get repaid. So we're making a bridge loan. We're just lending money in order to get that land to a safe place, so we can move ahead. And then, the legislation says that the earliest opportunity, when there is sales tax revenue in the authority, then the land transfers to the authority, and we get our money back. So it's a loan.
Thank you very much.
And then ultimately, then, the cost is borne from the sales tax by all the members of the authority or the MTC.
Thank you for that clarification. Now that we've had all that, what's the timeline that we're looking at this? Because if we're telling Charlotte taxpayers that we want you to support this, so that we can provide this bridge loan for us to move forward and go into our towns, to be reimbursed, what are we looking at? Are we looking at the potential of being reimbursed in five years? Are we looking at being reimbursed in 10 years? Or are we looking at a 25-year timeline before that reimbursement comes back, where we then have the ability to put more infrastructure into Charlotte proper?
Sure. I'm going to try to regurgitate what you told me yesterday, Brent, okay? So here's, here's the point. Right now, again, this is unique legislation in the state of North Carolina with this transit and transportation. Our biggest problem has been that the city's debt, we backed all of these purchases that the MTC or CATS made, even though they were made with the half-cent sales tax. But the full faith and credit of the city of Charlotte had to back it. Now, to your question, we do this with COPS, okay? So we have a AAA bond rating, and COPS, a little bit different, but my point is, when this new agency is stood up, they will be able to issue revenue bonds. And revenue bonds are a better deal than our COPS. So therefore, it would be their fiduciary responsibility to basically repay this as quickly as they can, because to spread this out when they have a better vehicle of financing than what we have would not be a good plan.
Yeah, comment. Let's be clear, there is a risk involved in this transaction.
Yes.
There is a danger we end up owning this thing, okay? And I don't think we should pussyfoot around on that. We will have several opportunities to offer a referendum, a referendum, as has happened in other places before there was finally success. The really bad outcome is, we just don't get there. And now, congratulations, Charlotte, you own this piece of land. The way I look at that is, let's say you think there's a 30% chance that that might happen, right? And let's say that then disposing of the land, you take a bit of a bath, you lose 30% of the money you put in. So that would be a $20 million loss in a 30% contingency. That translates to an equivalent cost, a certain cost today of $8 million, i.e. a 30% chance that you lose 30% of your money. So this is a calculated risk. But in the context of all the magnitudes we're talking about, for us to make that bet, in order for us to be able to move, because if we don't, we don't, there is no movement. In my mind, as I thought about this, was a reasonable cost to incur. But I just wanna be clear, there is a risk, okay? Let's not pretend there isn't. All I will tell you is, if we don't manage to get a referendum passed in the next five years for mobility, we have much bigger problems.
I would agree with that.
On the, on that.
That we need to look at something, whether or not it's this, I don't know. So we're thinking about what he just said. This is a risk that we are taking, and that we're talking about putting this on the ballot for our constituents. We just, Matthews had their meeting now, a month ago, where they voted no. Yet, here's the reality, they benefit regardless. So they gets, they have the flexibility to say no, raise your hand, but you would still benefit if this were to go forward. Are we in any way reliant on Davidson, Cornelius, Huntersville, any of that area, them putting anything out in support? And I just wanna make sure that we just have the answer out there, because this is one of the questions I've been asked. So like, for Matthews, there was conversation of them, their council coming together and voting not to support it. What if any impact does that have on us moving forward with this? And is there any potential impact with any of these other partnering towns, if they were to vote no?
I'm sorry, are you asking?
Because I'm trying to follow you, I wanna make sure I follow you. Are you saying, are they putting financial, like, are they putting in financially? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm asking, well, their vote, Matthews' vote, was to vote no, not to put anything on to their referendum. What I'm asking is, does that, how, if any way, does that impact our decision? And if any of the others, I don't know why we changed the screen, since I was still looking at this slide, but if any of the others were to be identified, and if they, in their town council meeting, were to vote no, does that have any impact on the decision that we're making?
I, I think that all of us could probably, but I think that Ed wants to describe the fact that it's a countywide tax. And so if it passes, everyone inside of Mecklenburg County that spends money in the stores pays that tax. So there's not a, there's no way to back out of paying the tax.
So when Matthews voted no, that had absolutely no impact on?
It did.
Well, no, it did. No, it did have, it did have an impact, because they were basically saying that they were gonna tell their voters not to pass it. Matthews is 31,000 people.
Right. So back to the question that I was asking you, manager.
But they may, because there's a choice.
My question.
Ms. Mayfield, can I say?
Can the manager respond to my question before you jump in?
I'd just like to tell you something, if you give me one second.
What do you have?
The fact that Matthews is not on board is something that is a concern to legislators that I spoke to, but they told me it is not a reason for us not to proceed. If we had a situation contrary to expectations, and contrary to all of the negotiations that have taken place, where others, among the members of the MTC, did not support the resolution, we would have a problem with the legislators. I doubt that we could present this thing to them.
And that is what I just asked the manager for them, him to answer, because any of these other partners that are part of MTC, that we have, we having a very similar conversation to the conversation that we having, if they choose to go the route that Matthews has, the what-ifs, where does that put us? If we say yes, they say no, we move forward still? If, let's just say that we still get enough support, even though they say no on their end, because we got, just have the public pushback. What does the what-if look like?
I think that, I'll say it a different way, Councilmember Mayfield, we are only in the position that we're in right now, because of two things. One was getting the three northern towns on board, because of the red line, okay? And as far as we know, they're on board. And the other thing was, and this is what makes this a very difficult conversation, is that it was so rail-heavy, that the General Assembly wouldn't even consider it. So to the point that you asked, I think that there is general consensus from the majority of the jurisdictions in Mecklenburg County to entertain this.
And that was the other piece that I needed you to say, based off of our conversation, is the fact that because although we were trying to put more rail on the ground, our North Carolina General Assembly leadership is more supportive of more roads on the ground. So we're saying, this is our balance, this is how we're trying to address the needs that we have and appease them. I have concerns still, of which I've shared with you, that we're, if, even if we're having a conversation of getting rail, that we're not going through the east side, because we made major investments over at what is now the formerly Eastland site. It would have been great, because along Alamo Mall Road, we have enough, that is wide enough, where we probably could have gotten that designated lane for rail to go up. But I think we, it needed to be said, and it had not been said at this point directly, that what we are looking at is a constraint, because our North Carolina General Assembly, not just our delegation, the General Assembly was like, we're not going to help support if you focus more rail than roads, because we want more roads.
The only other thing that I would add is that, and we have to figure out a way to make sure we get this information to all of you. So even when we think about east and west, there's the goal line phase three, and we're going all the way from Eastland to Rosa, Rosa, yeah. So there are a bunch of opportunities in this infrastructure that can move people around.
That little booklet, where we make it plain enough, so that we can get it out to the community, because again, this short timeline, we could have had this conversation in May and June, prior to us being out for six weeks, so that we could have really had time to delve into it, even though small group has been having conversation as a full council, just as Councilmember Johnson mentioned. At the end of the day, staff can bring some, bring a really good presentation to us, but we're the ones who have to go out to the community. And not only try to explain it, we're the ones who are going to see the impact if this is not presented in a way that really shows how we are attempting to connect the city, knowing that we have bus routes that have been realigned, and that honestly, areas of our community that need bus transportation the most, those routes have been eliminated, and that's causing a challenge. So unless we're gonna have that real conversation as well, it's difficult to say, yes, we're saying we're gonna pay about $5 million more than what our appraisal came back, because what you were asking for was probably, where we're doing 74 million, you was probably asking for 100 million, that we were able to negotiate down. So when you say, we had to figure out a happy medium, opposed to that total being 85.1 million, it was probably 100 million, but we managed to get there, those are things that are helpful for us to be able to understand ourselves, so that when we're talking to constituents, when we're talking to bus riders, when we're receiving emails from our bus riding constituency, we can better explain to them, I need to understand it, so that I can then try to explain it. And we have not even a full seven days to really wrap our head around approving something that we're now gonna tell the community, we want you to support this, but I'm not necessarily sure I can explain to you why I supported it. Thank you.
Okay, I think Ms. Ashmira had something that she'd like to say.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
And we'll wrap up.
Yeah, I just wanted to add something to Councilwoman Mayfield's point. As Mr. Drake said, there is risk here. And also, there is an opportunity cost. And I had asked that question to Mr. Jones and the staff. We are taking $91 million from our general fund, I mean, our capacity to purchase this. So there is going to be, I think, in Mr. Jones' in '26 and '28 bond, will have less, is that correct? So there is an opportunity cost to that, in addition to, in addition to the risk that you and Councilwoman Watlington raised about, well, what happens if the plan doesn't get, doesn't go according to the plan, and no one probably, who will buy this piece of land? So there is risk, in addition to the opportunity cost. So I just wanted to make sure, Mr. Jones, if you can also elaborate on the opportunity cost that we had discussed about the '26 and '28 bond.
Yes, so thank you, Councilmember Ashmira. A lot of the discussion with the 2025 budget centered around this whole concept of pulling capacity forward. So we pulled some capacity forward, and the '26 and the '28 bond, 23.5 million each one. But the concept of both of those were for future transportation projects. So we're gonna use some of that capacity for this, as well as the way that our CFO and our treasurer have been able to finance this in such a way. So what will happen is, your steady state, which is $220 million, 220, you just go back to the steady state, basically, in the '26 bond, the '28 bond, and '30 bond. However, if indeed, you're able to secure the sales tax as early as July 1, 2026, lined up with that 2026 bond, you will start to collect revenue, this estimated to be 102 million in the first year.
Okay, so we have our last speaker. We do have a very long agenda downstairs. So I'm gonna ask the mayor pro tem, who has been patient for a long time, to be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And don't worry, I only have 35 questions for the team.
She's breaking mercy.
But seriously, I am a Charlotte native, born and raised, and have taken part of CATS and participated in CATS, not only for recreational reasons, but for necessity reasons. And I can't think of a more impactful opportunity for us to have a generational shift, not only for our city, but for our region. The sheer notion that we are setting the financial stack in motion and getting the consensus to purchase the red line, ahead of some other key milestones, is a testament to Charlotte's commitment to a regional transportational plan. And in fact, if we're going to do something as transformational, as we've been calling our plan for many years, when you endeavor on anything that's transformational, there's always risk involved, there's always opportunity costs. It's about making the calculated risk mitigation the right way. And I wanna thank all of the And I want to thank all of the towns that, including Matthews, but all of the towns that have been working on this for months through their town managers, through their elected officials and representatives to really identify this as an opportunity to make an impact that we haven't been able to move the needle on in decades, not only in Charlotte, but within the regions. So we have, we also have, as we hear lots of conversations about some of the towns, but I actually went back and watched the Cornelius meeting and I think Cornelius actually have it right in that they will be unlocking millions and millions of dollars to dedicate to their road strategy however they see fit and that will allow them to collaborate with other northern towns in addition to receiving the benefit of having this transit benefit along the red line. And so this really is just the beginning, but I think many of our counterparts within Mecklenburg County are beginning to see, just as we have seen, we haven't had a revenue source for all of these wonderful plans that Mr. McKinney and team have put together. But having this revenue source unlocks the opportunity for us to begin to address it, increases our opportunity for capacity and then doubly allows us to tap into the federal dollars that we have to manifest that we have a revenue source in order to tap into. So it really is a multi-pronged approach that will allow us to be laser focused and strategic about how we invest, not only in transit, not only in our overall bus system, but the complete transformational transportation plan that we've been working on for years. And I'm really excited to be a part of that. Lastly, I just want to say, this is less to me, in my eyes, less about a mobility decision and more about an economic development decision. There's so many charlatians who don't have cars or who do have cars and the expense of the car is a significant burden over their overall monthly economic high that they would love and jump at an opportunity to be able to access and leverage a safe, reliable, secure transportation system. And the purchase of this O-line is really just the beginning of that, that will allow them to make the choice of whether they would like to purchase a car, utilize that car or take a more economical choice, as Ms. Mayfield mentioned when she was in Chicago. Do I pay $5 and get to where I need to be, my proper destination, or do I pay $50 and still get there, but it hits my pocket deeper? So this weekend, Councilmember Melina and I had an opportunity to actually do a ride along on the CATS bus from east Charlotte with a small group of citizens who leverage our transportation system quite a bit. We got from east Charlotte to uptown Charlotte in 11 minutes. It was, it was safe, it was secure, there was a lot of exchange that went on and people were very surprised by how that whole endeavor went. So there's an educational process that I think is a part of this as well. But this is an opportunity to double down on our economic development impact for the city and the region, for existing charlatians, for future charlatians who may decide whether or not they want to move to Charlotte based on their public transportation options. And I think as we move forward, I just want to be very clear because we've had lots of conversations about the silver line and, and other aspects, but those decisions have not been made yet. And once we have a transit authority, which is really a gold standard around the entire country is how you manage these things, so not at a city level or a county level, but really from a transit authority level, then we will have that opportunity to have the deep relational conversations, input sessions with the community so that they can decide. This is really us doing all the work to allow charlatians and the residents of Mecklenburg County to decide whether we want to invest in a transporational system that will put us on the path of being a world-class city and a gold standard city in the U.S. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Everyone, it's time to speak. We are going to have a rather long public forum as well as some recognitions that we have to, that we should make tonight. Please come down as quickly as you can so that we can begin as quickly as we can. I can't recall who's doing the indication.
Thank you for your patience and thank you for being here. I, we have, we have been working hard, the entire council, trying to make sure that the decisions that we're having to undertake are the best, in the best interest of our community. But I also, I'm going to change around the agenda. I know that people have agendas, so just give, give us a moment. We'll start getting to that point in a little bit.
We have a quorum.
Because, as somewhat, I'm sorry, who's?
You have a quorum.
What?
You have a quorum.
You have a quorum. You're great.
We're, we're okay.
We're okay.
I mean, I know that, okay. Before we go into the business of our continuing work, I'd like to take a moment to recognize one of our employees. Earlier this month, as Tropical Storm Debbie inundated the city's surrounding areas with severe weather, staff at Solid Waste Services were working tirelessly providing services to our residents. During the storm, Jamie Gray, a solid waste sanitation engineer, added a title to his name, and that title is hero. Now I'd like to share a video. Yep. Any moment. All right, we're going to see where our video is. Any day now. And it's a good video. We're going to watch this video though. We have a moment.
I was used to seeing trees down. That was the first time actually helping somebody.
I was showing up here.
I was driving, picking up cans and I heard somebody yelling. I couldn't understand what they were saying. So I thought maybe somebody just got their hand out. So I was about to keep on going and I heard the little girl scream better, help, help. And that's when I got out and walked over there. They were at their front door trying to get out, but they couldn't because the top of the ceiling or the roof just fell down in front of the door. Walked down there and ducked and there was like a little big enough space for me to stand up. I stood up and picked the kids up and put them in the car. They had all their family there getting out. The kids were fine, they weren't crying no more. But other than that, the father thanked me, he shook my hand. That was mostly it and I went and picked up trash and.
Thank you, Jamie, for going above and beyond. I can tell why you have a lot of energy and that little one there with you. The way that you stepped up to help our community in a time of crisis and for the daily work that you do, helping us make the city a beautiful place to live. You know, we often talk about the dedication of Team Charlotte, bringing what they bring to our roles and you have shown us all what it truly means to be a public servant. You remind us that the heart of our work isn't just the task that we're doing or completing or achieving, it's with the people that you and all of us serve and when lives touch. I'm proud to live in a community where neighbors show up for each other in so many inspiring ways. So Jamie, I want you to come down. Now, I want you to know, this isn't something we do ordinarily, but I would love that if you would come down with your family and let us shake your hand. All right. Oh, be careful. I forgot to tell you about the slippery part of this.
She's coming to you, she's rushing.
Many opportunities to do something first.
I don't know about that one, but okay.
Don't let your brother upstanding. Our city attorney and you guys.
Oh, look at the baby.
Who's very important? You, yes, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing your husband.
You gotta get running. Thank you.
Brother? Brother-in-law. Thank you.
Fist bump, fist bump.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just sanitizer on my hand, okay?
Thank you, baby. Thank you.
Your dad's better than Spider-Man, he's a superhero.
That's right.
How about that? Thank you so much. We fight for you every day. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much, I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much. It's heartwarming, truly heartwarming. All right, now we are going to be busy for a few minutes. We're now going to go to the speakers list before we do the consent agenda. So I have our speakers. I will call your names. Please be careful, the steps are steep and sometimes slippery. Our first speaker is Megan Lucas.
Megan.
I'm sorry. Someone, is someone talking to me? Oh, can't we do that before we begin the business meeting? All right, so we'll have our public forum and we're going to ask Megan Lucas and Heather McCullough to come down and speak first. And then following Ms. McCullough will be Cindy Campbell and Natalie Peterman.
Mayor.
We're going to do that after. When we start the business meeting, we will do that.
Mayor, can I just add one thing as they're coming down, please?
Yes.
I just want to, and thank you, Mayor, want to make sure that everyone knows, please I just wanted, and thank you, Mayor, wanna make sure that everyone knows, please come. As Mayor mentioned, it's a little slippery. Thanks to our amazing team within Charlotte Mecklenburg during the time that we were on break, if you have a wheelchair or you need accessibility, there is now spaces on both sides where you are able to have your chair. And if you all will notice, there is now a lower podium that makes it a little bit more convenient for those versus having to step up. So just wanted to make sure that you all noticed that there have been a few minor changes to make this building, your building, a little bit more accessible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We will have speakers that if they need access, we will be having the podium or the microphone so that if you need access and cannot come down these stairs, there will be, I see, you can see one. Antoine, raise your hand so that we can make sure that anyone that has a need can use those facility, that opportunity. All right, so are you, uh?
I'm Heather.
Heather?
Yes, Megan is not here. I'm not sure what the communication on this is.
All right, so thank you for being here. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Heather McCullough. I moved here in 2017, and I am a resident of District One. Since I've been old enough, I've volunteered. In 2022, I saw a post that C-Mac needed help. I applied, and three months later, I was approved. Yes, it took three months to get through the application process to volunteer walking dogs. Given C-Mac is part of CMPD, this is not uncommon. Upon completing my training, I became a regular. I enjoy meeting the dogs and giving them a much-needed break from their kennels. Shortly after I started, I received an at-capacity email. I drove to the shelter to pick up my first foster, Mary Ann, a six-month-old who had been found in an abandoned car with her littermate. I had never fostered and had not planned on doing so, but how could I not help save a life? Little did I know the frequency with which I would receive these emails: monthly, weekly, lately, multiple times a week. My experience is not unique. Time and again, I see new volunteers grabbing a foster dog when an at-capacity email comes out. Many like me had never fostered before. Best case, the dog gets adopted quickly, but often it takes longer, and during that time, they are less available to walk dogs at the shelter. Fosters often find the dog they brought home has kennel cough. They bring them to the shelter vet and can face hours of wait time due to understaffing. Since June, it has been common to receive notification from the vet that they are short-staffed, and fosters should only be brought in if it is an emergency. In the June City Council meeting, I heard it repeatedly mentioned that Charlotte is the 14th largest city, and yet we still have the same shelter from over 30 years ago when we were the 33rd largest. Having attended these meetings for a year, I appreciate all the important topics that come before you. I believe one of them is making C-Mac an independent city department with more autonomy over their budget and ability to implement lifesaving programming, and I respectfully ask you to solidify a commitment to the Adoption Center project as an initial step towards rightsizing the shelter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Our next, our next speakers are Natalie Peterman and Sade Cannon?
Sade.
Sade, thank you. Cannon.
I'm sorry, did you say Cindy Campbell?
Yes, Cindy, you're here too. Yes, thank you. So our next speaker will be Cindy Campbell and Natalie Peterman.
So Sade is not here.
Sade is not here. Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Okay, please, two minutes.
Okay, hi. My name is Cindy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a volunteer with Friends of Feral Felines. Since January this year, donor dollars have provided subsidies to spay 645 female cats and neuter 560 male cats for a total of 1,205 cats spayed or neutered. One male cat who forcefully impregnates a female cat can result in three litters per year. This means the number of females just mentioned would have gifted Charlotte, a city already exploding with cats and kittens, approximately 4,000 additional kittens. Why should this matter to you, City Council and Charlotte residents? Because citizen volunteers are being exploited. A small number of caring citizens are doing their best to address the issues because fellow citizens do not spay or neuter their cats. Almost 3,000 people have contacted Friends of Feral Felines begging for help this year, and there is never just one cat. As human women, we have access to birth control, morning-after pills, and even abortion. Female cats have no choice or ability to avoid assault and are forced to give birth. We cannot tell humans not to have sex. You also cannot tell them not to bring a kitten home. The issue arises when citizens allow fertile and testosterone-hyped-up felines to reproduce at random or abandon them altogether. This is not a cat problem. It is a citizen problem. How can you help? Please review the 2025 Budget for Animal Care and Control. Page 17 references an other adjustment item of $30 million for a planning program. 10 new positions were added in this department this year. Page 42 states the budget represents a 29% increase for these positions, over $600,000. If 300 dogs, cats, and other animals are coming in daily, and 200 to 300 are in foster homes, doesn't it make sense to address this by offering spay-neuter services to citizens?
Cindy, thank you very much, Ms. Campbell. Ms. Peterman?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Natalie Peterman, and I appreciate you giving me some time this evening. I'm here to give you a little bit of insight as to what it's like to be a volunteer for animal care and control. I spend my time in animal care and control, walking dogs. This gives them a break from the kennel, enriches their time at the shelter, and gives them some much-needed human contact. As volunteers, we frequently receive emails from our volunteer coordinator letting us know that the kennels are at capacity. On repeat, we hear, "All dogs at risk. Must be out by the end of the day. Euthanasia decisions will have to be made." The days that we get these emails are the last treat that they get to eat, the last ball that they get to chase, or the last lap that they get to sit in. One night, after getting yet another capacity email, I took out a dog by the name of Melody. She had been there for over a month, and so I knew that that put her on the at-risk list. When it was time to put her back in the kennel, I just wasn't ready. I signed her out and put her in my vehicle. I didn't have a plan. I just knew I wanted something more for her if this was going to be her last time out of the shelter. In the end, she got to enjoy some french fries and took a nap in the seat of my truck. Was it enough? Not really. But not enough seems like the theme of animal control. Not enough space, not enough money, not enough programs, not enough staff, not enough homes. I'm tired of the dogs making up for the scarcity with their lives. To help make this lack of enough better, I ask the City Council to consider two things. Please consider building a larger shelter and removing animal care and control out from underneath the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Tamara Artis and Nicole Campbell.
Neither one absent. I don't see them.
So, all right, all right, then Ms. Artis and Ms. Campbell are not available, so we will go to Victoria Pennell and Sigmund Williams. Victoria, and thank you very much, and Sigmund Williams? Is there another, is Sigmund Williams available? If not, then we'll go to April Lewis. Feel free to come down. All right, so Ms. Pennell?
Yes, hi.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the City Council and community. My name is Victoria Pennell, and I am the Executive Program Director of Reimagine Reentry. Reimagine Reentry is an organization dedicated to transforming the lives of individuals reentering our community from incarceration. Our mission is rooted in holistic approach, focusing on leveraging the qualities and potential of returning citizens to foster positive change, both for themselves and their communities. Reimagine Reentry is driven by the belief that everyone, from young people to adults, has inherent strengths that, when recognized, supported, and nurtured, can lead to transformative outcomes. We recognize that every year, at least 2/3 of justice and system-impacted individuals released from prison are likely to be rearrested and sent back within three years. In order to combat that, our programming was designed with three core objectives in mind: providing opportunities, reducing barriers, support, and empowerment. We offer a range of services, including job training, educational workshops, and mentoring programs for both juveniles and adults. Navigating the reentry process also often includes overcoming significant hurdles, such as access to housing, legal assistance, and mental health support. Our programs address these barriers by offering targeted resources and advocacy, ensuring that returning citizens have the support they need to overcome challenges to achieve stability. To further our mission, we are seeking the City Council's support in the form of resources and information for funding. Access to community spaces, job training programs, and educational facilities will enhance our ability to deliver these crucial services, as well as insights into local needs and gaps will help us tailor our programs effectively. Investing in reentry support is an investment in our community's future. By partnering with us, you will help us reduce recidivism, build stronger communities, and foster a more equitable society. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to working together to make a meaningful impact.
All right, I wanna make sure I know April, so...
Yep, they're standing with me. I'm the speaker. They're just here in support of me while we're speaking together.
I just wanted them to say their names so that we would know that they're with you.
No worries.
So which one are we on?
I'm on...
She's my friend. Yeah, we have the same names.
On April Lewis?
April Lewis, okay, so Tignan not here?
No, he's not here.
No, he was.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alicia Harvey.
Nice to see you. Thank you, guys, for standing here with her. All right, you have two minutes.
All right. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, and fellow charlatians, I'm here today to open a conversation about a collaborative solution to our housing challenges: transforming the Lamplighter Inn into a neighborhood stabilization center. I am pleased to share that both the residents and the owner of the Lamplighter Inn are in agreement with this proposal, demonstrating strong community support. Recent research from Harvard University's Opportunity Insights highlights a critical issue in Charlotte: Children from lower-income families have only 4% chance of reaching the top-income quintile compared to 19% for those who have higher-income families. This center aims to address this opportunity gap, and we invite your input on how to maximize its impact. The study identifies three key factors influencing economic mobility: educational attainment, social networks, and neighborhood effects. Our proposed center targets all three, and we're eager to discuss how we can refine this approach. One, we envision offering job, training, and educational resources. How can we best align these with our city's needs? Our transitional cooperative housing model aims to foster diverse social networks, and we'd love for your thoughts on ensuring this integration is successful. Third, we're planning a 10-minute neighborhood concept, and what services do you believe are most crucial for our community? Now, this isn't just about housing. It's about creating a hub of support that strengthens our entire community fabric. We want to partner with local schools and employers, and we're open to your suggestions on potential collaborations. The research shows that children's outcomes are shaped primarily by their social environments and community-level factors. We believe this center can improve these outcomes, and we're keen to hear your ideas on achieving this goal. This project aligns with expert recommendations to focus on youth, target communities, and invest in social capital. It embodies Charlotte's commitment to innovative urban development, and we want to ensure it reflects our city's values and aspirations. We see this as the beginning of a dialogue. We urge the council and community members to engage with us in shaping this final resource. Together, we can build a Charlotte where everyone, regardless of background, has a fair shot.
Thank you very much. April, wait, wait, wait. I would like to introduce you to Sean Heath, who manages a lot of our programs, and you know who he is, so I think whatever you guys do, you're doing the work. So as you're doing the work, let him help you do and fill in all the gaps, and we'll see you soon. All right, our next speaker, Shannon Bircham. And I know that this isn't gonna be the best way for me to pronounce, but Ukamaka Anante?
Ukamaka Anake.
Yes, thank you. You're up there. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, so Ms. Bircham?
Oh, you can go to the top.
Yeah, you can go to, sorry. Please, you have two minutes.
Good evening, distinguished members of City Council. My name is Shannon Bircham, and I've lived in Charlotte for four and a half years and worked in Uptown for two and a half years. I am the sole provider for a family of three. I also have a son with special needs, and everything we do is on a strict budget. I'm addressing you today to ask for a change in the current and future city parking regulations of Uptown Charlotte. Also, let it be known that I'm advocating for every disgruntled person, employee, resident, and visitor upset with these regulations. When I first started working in Uptown, Saturday street parking was free. Now I pay on Saturdays, and come September 3, there is more changes and increases. If your goal is to incite turnover, then it may work to some degree, but I know we can find a better solution. With that being said, the burning question is why? Why are you making these changes now? I need you to help me make it make sense. Where is all the extra revenue from increased street parking fees and ticketing going? These new regulations won't work because people will simply stop coming out to Uptown Charlotte. And there are 120 people, 120,000 people who work in Uptown and 33,000 residents, but there is 18 million visitors annually. The visitors are your bread and butter. The workers and residents are your glue. I also think it's interesting to note that median annual income for individual workers in Uptown is about $68,000, but the MIT Living Wage Calculator says, "For a single adult to be comfortable living in Charlotte, they must make an estimated $101,000." So it stands to reason the Uptown Charlotte employees do not make enough as it is to be comfortable living here. How are they supposed to afford $150 to $300 a month in parking fees because they can't move their car every two hours? There has to be a better solution. There will be beneficial for everyone. I'm asking for immediate consideration to drop the two-hour zoning regulation and focus on ticketing those who have not paid at all for their street parking. I also propose for immediate action to remove the extended parking hours about to take effect on September 3. What I propose for midterm action is creating a program called Uptown Employee Parking Plan, where employees can work with private lots to have a designated area for their employees to park at a monthly discounted rate. Because, let's face it, the workers are here to stay, and we are essential to making the city run. Another solution I'd like to propose is to have the private parking lot to offer an hourly rate for those who don't need 10 hours of parking.
Thank you for the opportunity. If you would give those to the city clerk right over that way, he will help you with that. Officer will help. And thank you for bringing this to our attention. Really appreciate that, okay? You did a great job. All right. So, um...
Ukamaka?
Here you are up here. Thank you so very much. Can you hear us okay?
Yes.
I wanna make sure we can hear you, though.
Yeah, can you hear me?
All right?
Okay. Um, my name is Ukamaka Anake. I'm actually up here because I just recently got diagnosed with multiple sclerosis. And a symptom of multiple sclerosis is optic neuritis. So as a result, on May 25, I actually went blind in my left eye. So because of how things work in Charlotte, ideally, I shouldn't have went to work. In a different city, I wouldn't have went to work while disabled. But the city of Charlotte does not offer any resources to disabled people, so I had to keep working while I was in the middle of an MS flare-up. In that process, I was misdiagnosed five times by five different specialists, one of them being an MS specialist, and told me that basically, even though I was presenting textbook symptoms of MS, that I did not qualify for a diagnosis, which I later found out was wrong. Also during this process, I've had to take the public bus, because again, I can't drive because I have optic neuritis. And I had to, I also didn't qualify for paratransit because I didn't have a diagnosis, because I was misdiagnosed by HM and Novant five times. I saw 22 doctors and did not get an answer until I had to go to Durham. And I say all of this because I'm kind of frustrated as a disabled person, recently disabled, that I have to keep working. I have to contact Senator Ted Budd to ask him, what resources are there for me as I wait for disability to come in, and what do I do until I get paid? Because as we know, disability takes 14 months to get paid out. But the city of Charlotte, the only resource there is to pay for at least rent and utilities is crisis, but crisis has been denying people's applications for months. Paratransit, for example, the bus that I just rode on today, it doesn't even have AC. With multiple sclerosis, you can't even be in an environment with too much heat, or you have another risk for a flare-up. So I just realized in Charlotte, I understand that Charlotte is a blue city in a red state, so a lot of precautions or things that are usually helped to like, you know, used to help lower-income or disadvantaged people isn't really a thing, but I've reached to my peak point of frustration. The bus system doesn't work the way it's supposed to.
So I know what you've said has moved all of us. I'd like to ask Ms. Babson to work with you so that we can have more of your story and also to have opportunities to see where we fit in that can support you in the city. All right? So is Liz? She's up, she's gonna come upstairs. I call it. They said up top, but she's gonna come up there, and she'll work with you, again, continue to help us understand how we can help you, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kimberly Potts and Gina Gupton. Next speakers. Good evening. Thank you so much for being here. And I guess I want to make sure that we have the right names with everyone. So Phil, tell me your name again?
Kimberly Potts.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Potts. You have two minutes.
All right. My name is Kimberly Potts. I'm here to speak on affordable housing, which in my opinion is almost a thing of the past here in Charlotte. From finding a one-bedroom apartment, housing, you're looking at a close to like $1,500 a month. And that's 1,500 times two. Someone to find housing here. Luxury housing, it's fine. All these apartments and housing that's going up, it's fine with all the pretty amenities or whatever. If you want to impress somebody, go down South Side. Redo South Side for some of these people who don't have housing or have a problem finding housing. Redo Brook Hill, who... We've been trying to redo Brook Hill for months. I would love to work with some people about finding housing, because it's almost irrelevant here in Charlotte, and to try to pay rent. And if you're put out, where do you go? Go to a tent community? They dock those down. Kids don't eat. The only time kids eat is at school. They don't have anything. You think that there's only adults in those tents? There are kids in those tents as well. This has been a passion of my heart for a long time. From looking at downtown with people laying in the bus shelters or whatever, it used to break my heart. And it breaks my heart that we can't afford rent here in Charlotte, North Carolina. And if anyone would like to work for me, or there is any resources that could work with me, I'm willing to work to make Charlotte a better place for those who cannot afford rent here in Charlotte, North Carolina.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you for your thoughtfulness and your leadership on this issue. We recognize it, and we know how it is in Charlotte, as well as many other places in this country. So thank you very much for what you're doing. All right. Ms. Gupton?
Hi, good evening. And I would like to thank you in advance for taking the time to listen to me. My name is Gina Gupton. I'm the president of the Bellmead Green HOA in northwest Charlotte. And we are near the Whitewater Rafting Center. So that is a very popular area for 18-wheeler trucks that have coming through from the business park. And we're having problems with them infiltrating our neighborhood, knocking down our street signs, our directional signs, and it's costing the city quite a bit of money because it's happening more often than not. In addition to that, there's a lot of grit on the roads in terms of stones and things that hit windshields. So we would really need the city's support with coming out near the roundabouts, please and thank you, to street-clean those areas so that those pebbles are not hitting our windshields and the metal off of those trucks are not piercing our trucks. The other thing that I'd like to bring to the city council's attention, and I see that Mrs. Wallington's there, and she was our previous... Yes, you were wonderful. Miss you. And I just wanted to mention that when AT&amp;T and Google Fiber are, you know, installing the fiber optics, they're breaking the gas lines, the water lines. I know that they come out and they mark those areas, but we're having a water main break issue right now on Bellmead Drive. And Google Fiber actually has their wires sticking out of the ground for the past five months. And there's a concave of a sidewalk that needs to be addressed. Now, that is a state road, Bellmead Drive, and I'd love to be able to explain why it's necessary for me to bring that to your attention, is because when the state comes to do any repairs on that road, they actually damage all of our established bushes, all of our juniper. They'll never... They won't pull a permit, but they will take those heavy equipment, and they will just go and they will just ruin our whole area. So we need your support, and I thank you in advance.
Thank you. We'll have to... Ms. Gupton, we'll have to have someone to come out to the area and see what we can do, okay? Thank you. All right. Our... I believe our next speaker is Stephanie Lask. Lask. And this is our 15th speaker. No, wait a minute. Who did I miss? I have several that we missed, yes. I think we have two more speakers. I'm sorry. Stephanie, how many did we have so far? I'm trying to check the ones I've checked off. 10th speaker. Thank you so much for being here, and please let me have your name again.
My name is Stephanie. The last name is pronounced Los. It's French, so don't feel bad for mispronouncing it.
Well, thank you so much. I think we have a few French speakers in this, around this dais. So you have two minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, city council. My name is Stephanie Los, and I represent Steelberry Acres and neighboring communities. I would like to acknowledge Councilmember Brown for her continued support of District 3. Our neighborhood is being negatively impacted by the actions of the airport. Our property values and quality of life are being diminished right before our very eyes. It saddens me to imagine our historic homes, some built in 1953, where our children now play, where we host barbecues, celebrate anniversaries, suffer the same fate of the man's house to make room for yet another industrial park. We demand an investigation into exactly how the man's house was allowed to be demolished. The airport says they did nothing wrong. However, the HLC say they followed the proper procedures to present the man's for historical protection. But somehow, it failed to make the agenda of this chamber. In corporate America, somebody would be fired for that.
Yep.
Yep, thank you. I don't think one more piece of our rich historic property dating back to the 1760s needs to be touched or de-designated until we have some better answers. So my question is, who is being held accountable for these actions? Over the last few months, we have engaged with over 100 neighbors and concerned citizens, and we are demanding transparency. So my message here tonight, I want to be clear. I want to stop. I want to hold up, wait a minute, and let's put some residents in this, because we deserve to have our voices heard. We deserve to be a part of this process.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Eric Wood. Mr. Wood, Eric Wood.
Eric is not here this evening. He had to travel for business. We do have another speaker that would like to come down, Diana James, if you'd allow her to take his place.
I'm going to go to the next speaker and catch up if we need to.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to the council today, and I acknowledge Councilmember Brown. My name is Diana James, and I am an 11-year resident of Steelberry Acres, the neighborhood immediately across Steel Creek Road from the Steel Creek Presbyterian man's house that was recently demolished. It was heartbreaking to see how a century of history was brought down by a bulldozer. This incredible piece of history that was once home to pastors and their families of Steel Creek Presbyterian, which was founded in 1760 and has ties to Billy Graham himself. I see the destruction of what should have been considered a historic landmark a travesty. Now our own historic neighborhood is in the sights of the airport's plans. There is so little of Charlotte's history that remains. Should we not protect what is left? Since the man's was intended to be presented to city council for a vote, the residents in our community are very concerned the historic Douglas House and even our homes could meet a similar fate. You are set to vote to de-designate property once owned by Steel Creek Presbyterian Church that just happens to be the only barrier between my home and what will become busy logistics centers and manufacturing facilities right in my front door. How can property that until now has been protected by historical designation be so easily disregarded? Is the property any less significant now? I think not. What is to be the fate of Steelberry Acres? Where we live in a charming neighborhood that has been around for seven decades, with big trees and yards big enough for our kids to run and play. Are we all destined to live in neighborhoods where the homes look exactly alike, with the yards the size of a postage stamp? The American historian David McCullough said, "History is who we are and why we are." Steel Creek Presbyterian Church and its adjoining properties, including what was the man's house, and our own Douglas House are among some of the most historic properties in Charlotte.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Vassilou?
Hello. My name is Jimmy Vassilio, and I'm a member of the Housing Justice Coalition. I'm here tonight to support residents near Charlotte Douglas International Airport, including those with Steelberry Acres, who are asking for transparency and accountability when it comes to airport development. Over the past few years, residents in the area have seen an incredible amount of change that has led to more manufacturing and logistics development than at any other time since they've lived there. A lot of that development seemingly being rushed as headlines are constantly, and I say suspiciously, generated about traffic at the airport. This has been exemplified by the destruction of the Steel Creek Presbyterian man's, which despite a recommendation for preservation by the Charlotte Historic Landmarks Commission in 2023, was demolished quickly on August 2nd after questions were asked about its future in late July. As someone who was part of the Charlotte 2040 policy map process in 2020, I sat in meetings where vacant lots near the airport that were designated residential were seemingly being turned into manufacturing and logistics rezonings without broad consent or participation from surrounding neighborhoods like Steelberry Acres. My concerns about these vacant residential lots being turned into manufacturing rezonings was the fact that they abutted occupied neighborhoods that were zoned residential. This concern was met with responses about best use despite concerns regarding increased pollution, traffic, and noise for those neighborhoods they abutted. I've lived in Charlotte long enough to know that when the city is determined to grow in coordination with private interests, it plans to do it at the expense of working-class citizens in quick fashion. We see it with the corridors of opportunity. We see it in how it gives Housing Trust Fund dollars to Olivia to carry out displacement rather than provide public housing, and we see it in the destruction of the man's and airport development in general. Instead of transparency about preservation efforts and its destruction, the city released an incorrect statement saying that they were never contacted by the Landmarks Commission about the man's.
Thank you very much. Our next speakers are Garland Green and Don Nicole McElwain.
Before I get on the clock, I brought you a handout, and I'd appreciate you getting a copy and looking at it. What I want to talk to you about today is light rail. Charlotte has been pushing for expanding light rail to no avail for years. The state North Carolina legislature is big on roads first. To quote Ed Diggs, "We need to change our strategy." What we're talking about now is doing that. The goal is running a 1% sales tax proposal, including a big spend on light rail, up the flagpole of the North Carolina legislature, and hope that they'll bite on it. And oh, by the way, we're talking about a $19 billion tax payout on this. That is a heck of a lot of money. And we talk about 1%, but we never quantify it to what it really is, $19 billion. The source of my conversation is articles out of the Charlotte Observer, articles out of the Charlotte Ledger, and information out of your 2015 budget. Two things that really hadn't been talked about that is very concerning. There's been a significant decline in light rail ridership since its inception. Secondly, a very small percentage of Mecklenburg County citizens ride to light rail, only 1.5%. We're talking about spending $10 billion on light rail for 1.5% that might become 3% of our population. People need to know about that. And even more concerning is, with the $10 million tax spend, there has been no opportunity for public input. I was listening to your meeting earlier today, and that was brought out. We have a tendency to not have public input in certain situations, or have input at the very last minute, like with the stadium for the Panthers. And we need public input before you fly something up the pole to the state legislature. I'd like to talk about each one of the lines separately, but I put that in my packet, and if you look at that, I'd be most appreciative.
Thank you, sir.
We'll be in contact.
Is Don Nicole McElwain here? Ms. McElwain?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that we've... That is the completion of our speakers for this meeting. And so we will now go to our agenda, and we're going to start with introductions by the city...
Can I say something? Can I add something? We were going to do the introductions. Okay, I wanted to add something about the public hearing.
Sure.
Okay. We heard about Google Fiber, and I just wanted to let you know that I have an email to our city attorney. I have an email right now from a resident, same issue. There's sewage in her house. The water pipe was broken. The city's saying it's not their responsibility. There was raw sewage in her house. Her insurance won't pay because it's a third party. So the city attorney, they sent the email 10 days ago. She's waiting. There are mice in the house now, and it's a problem. So I've asked the city attorney for a report of how often this is happening, because we need to know if this is indeed happening, if Google Fiber or any vendor is causing our residents problems. So I hope to get an answer as soon as possible with that report and your feedback from the risk department. If you could copy all of the council members, that would be great.
Certainly. If I could just add, Councilmember Johnson, and we have had a number of conversations about this. This does cross a number of departments, particularly goes from CDOT to Charlotte Water, and we have all the folks that are now talking to each other to make sure that we can get that information to you.
Thank you. This is a problem in the city.
It is a problem. And I mean, this is Google's second time coming after the idea of fiber, and the first time was not much of a joy either. So we have had in the past, we've had to actually call the Google exec and say, "Here's what we're finding." And so I think we need to go ahead and pull that back up from the first time that they came in when they were in the center city. It is a problem. So I don't know how much we can do, but I think it's definitely an idea to begin to talk to their chief person that's doing this work or responsible for this work. Okay. All right. Now we'll go and have introductions of the council members.
Starting with Ms. Kelly.
We'll start with our city clerk.
Stephanie Kelly, city clerk.
Temple Archimera, at large.
To honor Brown, it's an honor to serve District 3.
Good evening, Marjorie Molina, District 5.
Renee Johnson, and I'm honored to serve District 4.
Good evening, James Mitchell, City Council at large.
Marcus Jones, City Manager.
Good evening, Vilas Mayor.
Good evening, Dante Anderson, Mayor Pro Tem, District 1.
Ed Treese, District 7.
Tarver Carter, 6.
Good evening, Luana Mayfield, Councilmember at large.
Good evening, I'm Victoria Watlington, your Charlotte City Councilmember, representing at large.
Patrick Baker, City Attorney.
All right. Thank you. Now, if you would, if you choose to be with us, we will have an invocation. We recognize that not everyone follows the same tenants that we have, so feel free to express yourself as we can. Tonight, our invocation is by Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Which will be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to lift up those children and the students who started school today. We ask that they are kept safe and just have a prosperous year. Grant us, O Lord, a vision of your city as your love would have it. A city where the weak are protected and none are hungry or poor. A city where the riches of creation are shared and everyone can enjoy them. A city where different races and... A city where different races and cultures live in harmony and mutual respect. A city where peace is built with justice and justice is guided by love. Give us the inspiration and the courage to build it through your love. Amen.
Amen. That was beautiful.
All right. If you choose to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda items, and I would like to have, is there any item that someone would like to have a separate vote? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'd like to pull number 27, 28, 29, 31, 33, 41, 45, 52, and 54.
All right, is this for discussion or, or comment? You want a separate vote?
Separate vote, yes.
A separate vote for each one?
And possible discussion, yeah.
Okay. A separate vote for those. Ms. Mayfield?
Claire, I have items to pull, but I didn't hear all the numbers from my colleague. So after 39, what did you say?
I, I said 33, 41, 45, 52, and 54.
All right. Are there any others that Ms. Mayfield?
Yes.
A separate vote or a comment?
For a separate vote.
Okay. All right. All right, anyone else? All right, so I'm going to, we have a list here for separate votes, so do I have a motion for the items 1 through 70 with the exception of those that were asked for by Councilmember Johnson and Mayfield?
So move.
We have a motion. We have a second? Need a second?
Second.
Second, all right. All in favor of, any discussion for the motion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. All right, that's unanimous. Now, we will go back, and I guess we would just be best to try it in alphabetical order, I mean, in numerical order. So the first one, I believe, is item 27. The item is to approve the purchase of firearm ammunition by the sole source exemption, approve a contract with Dana Safety Supply for the return, for the purchase of firearm ammunition for a term of three years. Ms. Johnson?
Yes. Could we ask Mr. Coker to come up from the CBI program?
Sure. Mr. Coker, please join us. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you.
He's almost there. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Coker. So I reached out to him and Marie earlier today, so thank you. And I ask a question, the total amount of expenditures this week, were you able to get that total?
No, that took a, quite a bit of time, but I've made a note of it, and as soon as I'm able to pull that together, I'll make sure I forward it to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would have done it myself. I thought it would be done. Okay, what I wanted to compare was the total amount of expenditures versus the awards for minority women and small businesses. So I wanted to kind of compare that. Number 27, if you look at the Charlotte Business Inclusion, the sentence says, "This is a sole source contract and is exempt under the CBI program." Can you tell us why this would be exempt under the CBI program?
Well, there's several reasons why something might be exempt, but as it relates to sole source, there really typically is no MWSBE vendors who do that type of work. You know, I know we've talked about it in the realm of another item, but, you know, we also see situations where there's on-call services, where there's no subcontracting opportunities as well as single scopes. But in the, for this particular item, fire ammunition, we really have no one who does that kind of work, and therefore, it's, you're usually going to find these type of contracts exempt from the goal setting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, and all in favor, please raise your hands. All right, thank you. That item passes. The next item is item 28, which is approve contracts with the following companies for nuisance abatement services. I will, the list goes from Carolina Lawn to CMW Property, DJ's Lawn, ESA Preservation, GMB Enterprises, Hero's Lawn Care, Rosie Landscaping, and Trina Quality Lawn Service. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge this one because it looks like 100% of the contracts are going to minority businesses, is that correct? No? What percentage is CBI on this one? I thought it was 100%. Did you go to the second page?
It's 100% of the vendors listed at the bottom of the note, starting with Carolina Lawn Service, as well as DJ's Lawn, EAS, and GMB.
I think it's on the next page, two of two that list out the inclusion ones.
So it says, "The following certified primes have elected to self-perform 100% of the work," on the next page.
Mm-hmm.
So what percent is, has been granted to a minority or MWSBE business?
Madam Johnson, if I may, that, that is not determined yet. So for nuisance abatement services, we get a pool of vendors, and we make sure, okay, they're, got their licenses, they're certified, they're not all certified, sorry, but they're all insured. So we have this pool on the ready. So when a nuisance situation comes up, Rebecca Hefner and her team send out a notice, and they all put in bids. So it's not, no way to tell in advance how many, but these four out of the, I forget how many, I can't see, but those four, each time, they'd be 100% because they're all self-performing. There's no way in advance to know. It's task-based. Thank you. All right, the next item is item 20. We need to, we need to take a motion and approve this one, so we have a motion to approve 28.
Additional questions?
Oh, you have a question? Okay, thank you, Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maria, I actually, I also reached out, so you shared a little bit regarding, we've identified these particular vendors, we know that they are, have already gone through our process and been vetted. What is the tracking process that we have in place to make sure that we have equitable distribution? Mainly because Mr. Coker and I were at an event earlier this year where we learned of a vendor who was approved through a council previous process, but that vendor actually never received any work through the city. So do we have a process to actually track equitable distribution?
Yes, ma'am. We track the distribution, not necessarily with this one, is it guaranteed to be equitable? Because you have to put in a bid, so you might be one of these vendors, you might get outbid every time.
Okay.
For other contracts, but we, we have rotation and things like that in place, but we definitely can pull that information because we track it.
So, Mr. Coker, for you, our CBI program has done quite a bit of investment through AMP Up and through others. Is there a way, and you may not have the answer tonight because I didn't send this to you earlier, I only sent it to Ms. Harris, a way to track, again, to ensure that we utilize as many of these vendors as possible, and if there is a disconnect where a vendor keeps getting outbid, we step in? Since our ultimate goal is to grow businesses, and it's not really beneficial if businesses go through the process, but yet, they're not actually being selected, knowing we have to go with the lowest responsive bidder, but at the same time, we turn around and have to approve a number of amendments. So you really want the lowest responsive bidder when we go back and look at the totality of the actual project you bid on. So do we have anything in place or having conversations about?
Well, you've just planted the seed, you're right. We don't have a response to that, but it's duly noted. Councilmember Mayfield, and we will get on top of it, and if there's a best practice that we can implement, we'll explore that, and of course, we'll work with the departments to understand their side.
I would encourage you, the fact that the city of Charlotte is the best practice on a lot of things, so opposed to looking to see what someone else might be doing, we might be able to create it. Mr. Manager, you were about to jump in.
Yes, so thank you, Councilmember Mayfield. We had a conversation today about that, and so the, it's exactly what you said. If we have these lists, and these firms are not getting any of the work, then how do we utilize CBI to get them better prepared to be more competitive? So I totally agree with you. We need to capture the data, not just who gets what, but how competitive are some of these firms with, with the processes that we have in place? So total agreement.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do I have a motion on 29?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Anyone? Okay, so the next item is item 31. I think that was 20, was that 28?
That was 29.
That was 29.
That was 28 we were on.
Oh, 29 now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, approve contracts with the following country, we just did nuisance abatement ones.
It's 21, 29.
We're on 29.
So now we're on the purchase of plant-mixed asphalt from a state contract. Yes, this, this one indicates this contract is being purchased off existing state contracts and is exempt from the CBI program. I wanted you to explain that process, please.
Yeah, when you have a, a contract, a, that's exempt, when, it's off a state contract
based on this type of commodity type, that's the basis of having an exemption.
Okay, so I'm just bringing these up for the different reasons. I think there's been three different reasons so far that we haven't had, that we haven't met our CBI goal, and I just want to make sure we are being intentional. We talk about upward mobility and a tale of two cities, and these are opportunities to be very, very intentional. One thing about this council, we're unique. We're like, this is a historic council in the nation. We are the only council with a black woman mayor and so many women of color.
We're not the only, no, don't, don't.
Well, that's what Alexis or someone from the city did the research, and we're it.
Well, I think Karen Bass in LA is kind of like the, a black woman mayor.
Are there as many? No, but are there, no, to have the majority of black women.
Outstanding American conservatives, too.
Oh, my.
But anyway, that's what our city staff says, so anyway.
Regardless.
We, I'm just saying, we need to be deliberate in, in ensuring upward mobility for, for residents when we have the opportunities. And we talk about CBI, and so when there's exemptions for different reasons, I just want to highlight those reasons, and that's women and minority businesses. So this one's exempt because, and if this is something we can look at, changing this policy or talking about, just really reviewing that, I want the public to hear when we talk about CBI, how organizations are being overlooked. And if there's some intentionality, you and I, Mr. Coker, were at a meeting for women business owners. And, and Dawn, I'm sorry, she wasn't able to come or stay, Dawn McGilwin, she has a program, so maybe that's something we can take a look at. There might be women business owners that can meet these needs. So I just want to make sure that we're, that we're doing the outreach and, and enriching as many folks as possible equitably. Okay?
I agree with that, Councilmember. And as I said, we're all about constant and never-ending improvement, and with our program, we're always making changes. We learn new things, and we look to implement those things that we can legally pull off and as well as, you know, things that are based on the availability of firms. But your points are well taken.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brown, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that in reference to what Councilwoman Johnson just said, that we make things look attractive, but we're not following through with it, and the data is not there to support it. That's what I heard out of my ears, and so we got to just do a better job with making sure that we, we put the data out there and the numbers that we produce and say we're going to do these things that we can just back it up and support it. And from the sounds of it, we're not doing that. So that is something we definitely need to look into. I mean, it really is. I mean, we just, it, it's just, it's public, we're city council, we serve for the community, for the public, not for, not for us, not for our agenda, but for the people that put us here. So we just got to be more intentional. And so when I heard that, that's what I heard. And, you know, I know you, I know y'all work hard, maybe we're missing the mark, and somehow we're missing the mark, but, you know, just like without, when they come in and they speak about different things that we're doing to them in the community, and then the council don't know about it, it drives me crazy because collectively, we're all responsible and we're all accountable. We are, and we're a team. And that's where the team come in, that the team gets the blame for the historic landmark being knocked down in Steel Creek. I'm, I'm just saying. Can't say, "I didn't know about it." My constituents don't want to hear that. They want to know that I'm representing them unapologetically and our truth, all of us, and making sure that we can give them a detailed explanation of things, and a lot of times I can't. I just can't. So that's where I'm at.
Again, we're hearing you, and we will work as we continue to do. When we have things that are per policy that are exempt, that's the policy, and we follow that to the T. Now, sometimes it has to be changed, of course, we'll have to work with the city manager's office to make those changes if we can do it legally. But I'm hearing what you're saying, and it's duly noted.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you for your hard work, but when you say sometimes things had to be changed, or there has to be an, an adjustment, do we get that information? Or is that something that you do with the city manager, and we don't know about it?
No, you will know about it, but when we made the most recent change to our procedures manual, we can, with the office of the city managers, make those changes. When it's a policy change, that comes to you.
Yeah, I know. Right, I get that. But when you talk about people that have filled out the application, and they pass the credentials, and they're able to move forward, and then they don't hear anything, do we reach out to them? Is there a process? Is there a check and balances so we even just keep in constant communication with them to say, "You passed it, we still know that you are here, and this is what you can expect next, like the next steps?" That's all I'm asking.
That's a good question. Good question.
I mean, I'm not asking for too much, and I'm not trying to be hard, I just want to ask the tough questions that people will want to know. And I want to know as a representative of, as a member of this council.
All right, I think the manager wanted to.
Yeah, so Mayor, Room to Council, a little bit different than, than 28, which we, we just went over, where there's some opportunities. I think that when we start to think about purchasing off of state contracts, there's these negotiations which get you to a, a low price that is available for all municipalities to purchase off of those contracts, whether they're vehicles or things of that nature. We'll continue to look at the philosophy, the policies of the city. I just wanted to pull this one a little differently because a lot of those negotiations in terms of the price are, because some people call it piggybacking, being able to just use the state contract that's been negotiated. But, but your questions are duly noted.
Thank you for all your hard work, Mr. Manager. You're in that position for a reason, and I know you take the tough questions with a grain of salt. You always smile, you're always poised, and you represent your position very well. So thank you for taking those tough questions from us. Sometimes I look out and I see people, and they're making all these faces, but you don't do that. You really, really take the tough questions, and we got to do a better job with our facial expressions, because as a council, when we're asking questions, I think your staff can benefit from just looking at your face. We don't know what you're thinking by looking at your face.
Very demure.
So thank you for that. I just want to say that, okay? That's, to me, that's a professional compliment to you on how you handle your position. So thank you.
That is very fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion. All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a motion for 29?
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. All right, now the next item that we have after 29 is 31.
So, so on Agenda Item 31, flashing beacons for pedestrian crossings, are there any comments?
Yes.
Johnson.
Thank you. So we've had, they were exempt because they were sole source, exemption because of a state contract. This is another reason for an exemption. The contract goals were not established on this contract because there were no viable subcontracting opportunities. Can you explain what that means, please?
Again, in instances like this, and more times than not, it's based on a single scope of work, and so when you look at that contract, there's nothing else but the, the actual scope of work, in this case, the flashing beacons to be performed. Now, what we do is based on the commodity codes, we will send that out to the certified MWSBEs, and all of them will have a shot at bidding on it, but in this instance, there's no viable subcontracting opportunities.
Okay, I just wanted my colleagues to recognize there are at least four reasons for exemptions for minority contract. Move to close?
Second.
I mean, yeah, move to approve.
Any additional comments? You'd like to speak, Mr.?
No, I was just saying I was second.
Okay, I have a motion and second for number 31. All in favor, raise hands. Any oppose? That is unanimous. We will move on to Agenda Item 35.
Thirty.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
Thirty-three.
Couldn't read my own handwriting. Item number 33, air filtration systems and maintenance. Are there any comments on Agenda Item Number 33?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
This is a fourth reason. Contract goals were not established on this contract because there were no MWSBEs available to perform the work for the contract. I mean, I know that's self-explanatory. I just want my colleagues to recognize this is the fourth reason. Make sure that we are utilizing as many resources as possible, perhaps reach out to that QC Women in Business, Dawn McIlwain, that database she has, or if there's any other ways that we can do some outreach. If we truly want to meet these goals, I think there's just lots of room for improvement. That's all I have.
Is there a motion to approve A and B?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise hands. Any oppose? That is unanimous. Before we proceed, Mr. Koker, it might be, you know, we have recurring statements here, and you're having to explain again and again, perhaps as you are creating the agenda, that you might put a note in detail each item as to why this particular item did not fit our criteria for MWSB participation. I think that would add to transparency in the process as well.
And I have a couple folks reviewing this live, taking the notes, and so we will put together a report, and, and really give you a sense of the work we're doing, especially in these instances that are problematic, ones where we see that there are gaps in availability, but we will address it in a detailed fashion.
Thank you. Mr. Driggs would like to be recognized?
I'm just concerned that maybe these questions raise a question, a question about our commitment to our CBI program, and Mr. Koker, do you know what the total dollar volume is of contracts the city enters into fulfilling our CBI goals? I've seen a number before.
That's a good question, great question. Actually, you're going to see something at the end of the week in your weekend reading. Our annual report, we did $197 million last year with the three designations net, as far as I know, is a record, but I'll provide that to you, I'll give you some detail on everything that you'll see in there. And, and along with that, and this is probably a, a tribute to you, Councilman, you're going to see our, our economic impact study. We talked about that, we completed it, and you're going to understand for every dollar that we invest, what the yield is in, in the way of ROI.
I think those are fair questions. I just wanted to point out that we do have a very large, and Mr. Mitchell over there is the Lone Ranger, the champion, we do make a large investment in our CBI program.
Thank you, Mr. Driggs. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 35, construct Sardis Road North Sidewalk. Are there any comments?
Which one?
It's Mayfield.
Thank you. Marie, I sent a question, trying to understand why the bid from Carolina Prime Developer LLC did not meet the general statutes, and also, what was in the DOT proposal that justifies that $463,000 increase?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for that. So part of the reason, well, the main reason, they did not submit completed signed bond documents, so, and we did consult with the attorney's office, that bid was not deemed responsive. And then your second part of your question was on the difference in the cost, and if you take prime was kind of anomaly, they were way lower, but if you averaged the next five, this was in line, and it was under the engineer's estimate.
That helps me to better understand, unless my colleagues have an additional question, and I move for A to reject the low bid submitted by Carolina Prime Developers LLC, and B to approve a contract in the amount of $1,444,397 to the lowest responsible bidder DOT construction.
That is unanimous. What's the agenda says?
The motion is to approve A and B, A being to reject.
A is to reject.
Okay. So it's, as stated, I'm, I'm just getting clarification, colleagues.
A was to reject.
Okay.
B was to approve.
Okay.
Yes, and that was unanimous.
Okay. Yeah, my vote is yes.
Excellent. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 39, engineering services for water and sanitary sewer relocation and improvements. Were, were there any comments for this item? Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you. Marie?
Yes, ma'am.
So I, so for the sake of continuity, that when we identified that the same subs were chosen by each prime, so I'm just, and we do this all the time, but the question I'm trying to get to is we've identified 10% for minority participation. Are these contracts stating that it's 10% per selected prime or 10% in totality?
So, thank you for that. It's 10% per prime, so each prime has, and the subbullets in your agenda are who they are planning to do business with to meet that 10%. We don't know necessarily what ratio will land in the subbullets till the actual work is, till they know actually what the actual work will be, but they've all committed to 10%, and they've identified those vendors to meet that 10% each one.
Thank you for that, because I don't think I've ever asked that question before, but for whatever reason, it jumped out, because these vendors that we identified, you will see that they are utilizing the same subs, so it just triggered the question of, okay, so under each sub, that is separate work, so for those that, because they still have to do their own bid process.
Each prime has to do their own 10%. Yes.
And so in theory, it's really more than 10%, the way it breaks down when it comes time to actually utilizing the primes, because of, Kemely Horn uses, let's say, RDL, private utility locating. For Kemely Horn, that's 10%, but Colliers Engineering and Design has RDL down for engineering support. If RDL is chosen for both, since those are two different primes, that 10% goal is for each of those primes, or we're just saying the total? Because the total 10% could be like 2%.
So it's 10%, sorry to interrupt you, but it's 10% of the prime, but not 10% for each subcontractor identified.
So, of which unfortunately, the manager is not around the table, and, and, okay, let's grant it, I've been doing this a decade now, but it, for whatever reason, that is the question that came up, because when we're approving these goals, and we say 10%, 5%, 7%, whatever it is, but then we list eight different companies, understanding that those companies still have to bid, and lowest responsive.
Sorry, not necessarily for this contract.
Okay.
This one, and I'm sorry, I can't speak to all the details, so yes, some like nuisance abatement, yes, other ones, it depends on their specialty, they might have several others it might be, because we know we're going to be using multiple at one time, so there's a variety of reasons.
Right, because for Colliers, they split that up, split this in a way where you've identified four different companies for this engineering support versus two companies that will get the bulk of the work. But I just wanted to get a better understanding to make sure, keep it in line with the comments that my colleague mentioned in questions I've asked previously, that if we're going to identify multiple businesses, that we have a equitable metric in place to ensure as many businesses get the opportunity, so that we're not putting ourselves in a position where the three favorites are the ones that's utilized all the time. So thank you for that explanation.
Yes, thank you, and we've definitely taken yours and others' feedback about what we can do to help grow ones that may not get business.
Thank you, Marie. Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. Is there a motion to approve A and authorize B for item number 39?
Move to approve A, authorize B.
Okay.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise hands. Any oppose? That is unanimous. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 41.
I had 39.
So we've got 33, 35, and 39.
We just, we just finished 39. 39 was, was what we just.
My apologies.
Yes.
Oh, that was, my apologies, I lost track.
So we are moving on to Agenda Item Number 41. The instrumentation of water testing is there, are there any comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So Mayor Protem, you, you said that there were recurring reasons, and that, that Mr. Koker might consider putting a sentence in the, in the agenda item. The hard copy, there are reasons, there are sentences, so we have explanation. And thus far, this is, we've had different reasons, they weren't recurring reasons, so we've, we've heard four different ones, and this is the fifth different reason for an exemption. And this one is because there, these are cooperative purchasing contracts, and they're exempt from the CBI program. Can you explain what that means, please?
Yes, a cooperative is a situation where there's a, a number of contracts or items that are purchased as a, a, a group, and that allows us to get a lower price, and with these type of cooperatives, you get the lower price, and they're exempt from the policy.
Okay. Thank you. So, I mean, again, if we're serious about meeting our CBI goals, we as a council might look at our policy. Thus far, we've heard sole source contracts are exempt, state contracts, or state, because when we piggyback, or, state contracts are exempt, no viable subcontracting is exempt, no MWSB contractors available, and then cooperative purchases are exempt as well. So this is for my colleagues, just to, to recognize that, that we should pay closer attention and possibly look at our policies for CBI. That's all I have. There's no questions? Move to approve?
Second. Thank you. I have a motion to move and approve, Ms. Malina.
Just really quickly, I mean, so this, this begs the question, Mr. Koker, so obviously, this is a policy standard, right? Like, these, these particular decisions are being made based on a current policy, right?
Yeah, it's actually our procedure manual, but, you know, pretty much the same thing.
But is this something that corresponds with the decision that a council previous has made as to how these decisions are determined? Like, is it, so what I'm trying to make sure that I collect from this exercise of, of isolating these particular items is, is there something that the council can do to standardize this decision-making, or has that already been done as an exercise prior to now? Because I, I mean, so what, what I'm, what I'm finding, right, because I, I see my colleague here meticulously making, you know, notes as, to try to find some, something that corresponds with the standard, right? Something that this policy body can take a look at and see if we can formulate from a policy perspective, right? So, and I'm, this may be putting you on the spot, and I'm open to you maybe coming back to the council with something that says, this is the policy standard that's been previously adopted by council, that it corresponds basically with how we make this decision, or I, I don't know, Mr. Manager, is there something like even a recommendation of, of how we can move forward? Is there, again, this is a, a question for standardization, you know, so that there's not an implication that we're nitpicking, or that the city is making these decisions on a, on a case-by-case basis. There should, in my opinion, even listening to this exercise, be some standard to which how, you know, to which we're making these decisions. Does that make sense?
It, it does. Thank you, Mayor, Rooms of Counsel. What I would, what we will do is come back to you with those things that are policy-driven, those things that are administrative-driven, and let's take a fresh look at it to see, you know, how some of these are aligned with where the council would like to go, where some of these are aligned with what has been low cost, for lack of a better word, and what balances there. I, I do want to continue to reiterate, though, that part of what we're trying to achieve with CBI is to bring more opportunities and scale up those different, you know, folks that are doing business with the city. So why don't, I would like to do that, I'd like to just, because this is a great exercise, okay?
Yeah, I think so.
A little painful, but great. So I'd like to be able to, because, to see how much is policy-driven, how much is administratively-driven, let you see that, and then we can make some decisions based on that, fair enough?
Thank you for that, Mr. Manager. I think, you know, and, and thank you to both of our colleagues for, right, bringing this to our attention as a body, you know, to, and I'm glad, Mr. Manager, you're willing to do that, because I, you know, based on some of what has happened since I've been a member of the council, you know, now we have a study as to, you know, for some guidance, and, and how we've, you know, done historically, right, and how we've administered those opportunities or not, right? And now the, the scope of, of who we intend to include in those opportunities, we have that information, you know, qualitative and quantitative information to collect from, so I look forward to that. And I'm, you know, again, I'm looking through this with you guys as you're making these decisions, but I think it's a good assessment to say it's time now to, you know, take a look at what you're bringing to our attention.
Thank you. Way to move that forward.
Thank you, Ms. Malina. Any additional comments?
That's it, Mayor Protem.
I had a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item Number 41, as stated in our agenda. All in favor, raise hands. Any oppose? That is unanimous. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 45, plumbing services. Are there any comments related to Agenda Item 45?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
So this one is a, a repeat reason, that the contract goals were not established on these contracts because there were no viable subcontracting opportunities. And, and this one just jumped out to me, because my grandfather was the best plumber in the city, right, but I don't know that he would have had the credentials to get a city contract. So I want to make sure that we are, there is a pathway, that we are able to, to help these small businesses, you know, that, to be able to compete at this level, and have the credentials to be able to do that. So I, I just wanted to make sure, we talked about tracking, we talked about tools, you just mentioned that, Mr. Jones, how we can help these businesses to scale up. So I, you know, when you see plumbing services, and there's no, you know, no opportunities, it's, these are, these are jobs that, you know, individuals have that may not have a college degree. So I think these are great opportunities. That's all I have for that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 45, as stated in our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That's unanimous. We will move on to Agenda Item Number 52, professional engineering services for minor storm drainage improvement projects. Are there any statements or comments on this item?
Same thing, just, oh, okay, go ahead.
Same thing, just, okay, go ahead.
Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you. Marie, and this is really consistent with the conversation that we've been having tonight and Mr. Koker. The question that I sent to Marie is, what is the process to ensure all eight companies are utilized and to ensure equity in the disbursement? But I believe you answered earlier that as we go along, even though we've identified a number of different companies, there's still a process where they have to bid?
So for this particular one, thank you for bringing this up. It's a different model. Stormwater is co-locating with these vendors and playing to keep giving them projects. So when they finish projects, keep using... So in this one, ideally, everybody would be used multiple times.
And I appreciate you sharing it because a number of our projects earlier, and correct me if I'm wrong, because they were construction-related, it was a different conversation, but because of, one, the department, and that department being the enterprise, that this is an opportunity where those that identified will be utilized. We just... We haven't hear contract goals were established on this contract as there were no viable subcontracting opportunities. Mr. Manager, Mr. Koker, for, since I've been back this time around, we've had multiple conversations that we have MWSBEs that are prime-ready and that our goals should not just be for subs. And we should be identifying if we are doing what we should be doing, because I do not like the fact of Guilford County having higher numbers in MWSBE and DBE participation than what we have for the City of Charlotte. So when we have an opportunity, it would be nice to have it noted if any of these businesses are MBEs, SBEs, MWSBEs, because we should not regulate minority participation only to be a sub when we have a number of opportunities as primes that should be considered for these positions. So when we say that no goals were established, our overall goal should be to receive the best vendor and to create as many opportunities for the best vendor, yet adding in that if we have an opportunity to support an SBE or an MBE and they actually submit a viable bid, they should not be regulated to, oh, we're going to utilize you as a sub. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. Any additional comments? Is there a motion to approve A and authorize B of item 52 in our agenda?
Some moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We'll move on to agenda item number 54, CATS Operation Bus On-Site Inspection Services Contract. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
I'm not sure what onsite inspection services are. Can you...
Yes, ma'am. So this is vendors that would come on, when we say onsite, they come to the CATS facilities and perform the inspections.
Oh, yes, okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and this is another one where there were no MWSBEs available to perform the work for this contract. And I think you've talked about this before, Councilmember Mayfield, if there were a needs list or something, if we could have a needs list where there's opportunities for minority businesses, if we could identify services where there are not any minority businesses, and again, use that database through Queen City Women in Business or something, and just making sure we're doing the outreach. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item 54 as stated in our agendas. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. And I believe that takes us to the end of the list of items that we'll pull from.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Raise the lawn.
I missed that one.
Oh, we have it on.
Great to be back.
I'm going to move to approve A and B for 57 Airport Fourth Parallel Runway North Air around Taxway. Marie was able to answer the question.
Second.
I have, there is a motion and a second to approve 57. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. And that completes our...
Thank you.
Our items pulled from the consent agenda, and I will pass it back over to the mayor.
All right. Let's see where we are on this process right now. Sixty... We're at the beginning? We'll go ahead and start at the beginning. Who wants to start?
End of the beginning.
Huh?
We're at the end of the beginning now.
We're at the end of the beginning. So let's start with our action, wait a minute, our public hearings now. We have public hearings and a number of them, and so I got action items, vote on public hearings. On item number seven, public hearing and decision on amendment of the Steel Creek Presbyterian Church and Cemetery Historic Landmark Designation, and we have one speaker. Colin?
Aren't you on item seven? Come on down.
We have more than one speaker for that.
You want to speak? Would you like to speak?
We have more than one, though.
I only have one.
Not for that.
She's on the next one. Madam?
It's on the second page. I know someone took my...
We have four. Yeah, we got more than one.
Okay, we have more than one.
Six speakers.
Let's get the speakers list. We have Stuart. This is item number seven, so Stuart Gray, John Howard. Do you wish to, who's, is Stuart, do you want to speak?
Stuart Gray, John Howard, and Tommy Warlock are here to answer questions if staff has questions about these items.
All right, so if we have questions, we'll go ahead and, at our next, this is also where Colin wanted to speak, or you are answering questions, too?
I'm here to answer questions.
Okay. All right, so do we have anyone that wants to speak to this? I'm going to, John...
Stephanie?
Yes, she's here.
She's here?
Uh-huh.
Where are you? Come on down. We want to hear your comments.
Stephanie, you've got three minutes on this one. Did you print anything for us? Did you print it?
Yes, I did.
Give it to the officer. Thank you, hon.
I got enough, 15, right?
I think, yeah.
May I ask if you also have Diana James on the agenda to speak this evening?
I'm sorry, who?
Do you also have Diana James on the agenda to speak this evening on this item?
Yes, Diana James after Eric Wood. Is Eric Wood here?
No, unfortunately, he, right, he's traveling for business.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So just full transparency, the presentation you're being handed right now is really Diana's presentation, so I have my own message to deliver, and she's going to deliver that message.
Okay.
All right. Are we ready to start?
Yes, please.
All right. Good evening, sunny council. Again, my name is Stephanie Losso, representing the Stillberry Acres neighborhood and surrounding communities. Again, I would like to acknowledge Councilmember Brown for her continued support of District Three. An airport official recently made a statement that they are in the business to fly planes. Planes is not what we are talking about tonight. We are concerned about the push for development to build manufacturing and logistics centers that would surround us. We know where we live, and we've accepted the noise from the airplanes. Many of us, in fact, have taken advantage of the noise mitigation program. We get it. So why does it feel as if the airport has transitioned into a business of land acquisition for manufacturing and logistics? They say we want an airport fit for a queen, but what about the residents? As I drive around, I see many, many empty buildings. Why don't we fill those first before we destroy more historic properties? I can't help but wonder, is this need or greed? A major barrier to the airport's 2040 plan was the manse house. How did this historically designated home get demolished seamlessly in the dark of night without city council's vote, without city council's voice? Our community is outraged, along with the HLC. Steel Creek Presbyterian Church is the second oldest church in Charlotte. The Reverend Billy Graham himself likely crossed the threshold of that home countless times. The church once served as a cornerstone of our community and boasted a congregation of over 1,000 members. Many of us went to church there, our kids went to daycare there, my son graduated from pre-K, we hunted Easter eggs on the front lawn, I voted in that gym. The airport should not be allowed to do whatever they want. They are the second most profitable airport in the U.S. Congrats to them. But I hope you will pause to consider the impacts their long-term plans will have on our families, on hundreds of families at that. Members of our community deserve a voice in this process. Tonight, city council is faced with a difficult decision to vote to de-designate the historic Steel Creek Presbyterian Church and historic cemetery and the surrounding property for industrial development that will soon swallow up my precious neighborhood, Stillberry Acres, and many of our neighboring neighborhoods. There has been a major lack of transparency in this process by the airport, and this will have a major impact on hundreds of citizens. I don't like to speak in opposition without offering a solution, so my message is simple. Again, I'm asking us to push the pause button. This needs to be looked at as a more comprehensive plan than one rezoning, another rezoning, another rezoning, us coming to all these meetings, how it impacts us, where is our voice? At the end of the day, I'm looking at development to the right and front and behind me, and my 90-home community, my precious community that's been around since the 50s that boasts historic homes, has significant historic value, is going to be demolished in this process. We are being picked apart at rates that are not fair. They are not comparable. The prices that the airport is paying us for our homes are not fair. We cannot replace these properties in Charlotte. The closest thing I came was a $350,000 difference to live in Gastonia.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration. Please defer tonight's decision.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Diana James.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak yet again. Please take a note of the presentation that you were handed. The very first picture is the historic manse house that was demolished back in August, back on August 2nd. We thought that there was an opportunity to save that property, but somehow it never made it to this chamber, so it was very disappointing. I want you to take a look at the second page. So everything, airport owns everything in dark blue, and of course, our little community is circled in red. Take a look at that, how we are completely surrounded by what is to be manufacturing logistics centers. Now on the second page, the future of Steel Creek and the Steel Creek community and beyond.
Third page.
Oh, third page, sorry. The third page. Everything that is highlighted in red there is what they are calling an area of influence. That includes areas of West Charlotte and Mecklenburg County that are at the vicinity of the airport. So these are going to be planned further developments for whatever purposes that they see fit. Now, on the very next page, I want to take an opportunity to look at the plan for our communities, which is the CLT South. So there are several purposes listed, which maybe sounds good for tax dollars, and it probably makes sense for our city, but how will this impact our families, our property values, our quality of life in Stillberry Acres and the surrounding communities? And then on the next page, Stillberry Acres Historic Significance. We have 90 homes remain that were built in the, from the 50s to the 70s. Historic Douglas House that was built in 1911 remains an important role in our story, and some of our families have lived there for decades. De-designation of historic properties means erasing our history, diminishing our way of life, and ensures decreasing property values. Is this the airport's plan all along? Where families once lived, and I gave you a couple of pictures of examples of beautiful properties that once had homes standing there. These families absolutely volunteered to sell their property to the airport, but where in Charlotte can you find a yard that looks like that? We aren't just a piece of property for the airport to acquire, we are a neighborhood that means family to us. And then, of course, on the very last page, save our history. The Steel Creek Presbyterian Church that was established in 1760, the beautiful sanctuary that was built in 1889, the acreage around the church is designated as historically significant today. Why does that change? Because the airport wants more logistics and manufacturing. The Douglas House was built in 1911. It symbolizes the heart and soul of Stillberry Acres. Vote no to designate these special historic properties and protect Stillberry Acres from overdevelopment.
All right, is there any other person that would like to speak to this topic? Okay. Colin? Brown?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Colin Brown on behalf of Foundry, who really has nothing to do with a lot that we've heard about. So there's a lot of confusion going on. You may remember about a month ago, we came with a rezoning petition for an area right around the Steel Creek Church. Part of what Foundry is committed to do in working with the airport, with historic landmarks, is to preserve the Steel Creek Presbyterian Church, to preserve the cemetery, and to potentially move the Douglas House to that site and preserve it. So what's going on is, and I think the site is 37 acres in total that is designated, the plan that has been worked out to save those properties is to sell a portion of that to my client who will develop it. The remaining 14 acres where the church is, the cemetery and the Douglas House will be, will remain. She built this city, would move into the church structure, operate their nonprofit there. Founder also has a partnership with Kerry Meek Foundation to come on site, work on job training. So imagine my surprise also a couple of weeks ago when I read about the manse house being torn down. I was afraid that was the house that we said we'd protect. It is not. So yes, something has gone on between historic landmarks and the airport. I get it. That doesn't have anything to do with us. It is confusing. So when I talked to Councilmember Brown, I said, I, number one, want to distinguish, I don't know what's going on there. We are committed to saving, to preserving these areas to do that. We do need the de-designation. So the de-designation, that is being brought actually by historic landmark staff. We are not a part of that. We're here supporting it. That is being worked out with historic landmarks with our client. We do not own the property. The properties owned are owned by the City of Charlotte and the Steel Creek Presbyterian Church. So that's just the background. I know there's a lot of drama going on also.
Is there?
So I want to distinguish this from that and let you know that the plan for these properties, even though there is a de-designation, the point of that essentially is to create the financial ability to maintain the 14 acres that is the historic church, the cemetery, and the Douglas House. So I'll defer to the experts on historic to kind of talk through that. Don't take my word for it. That's our involvement. Thank you. Happy to answer questions.
Okay. Mr. Gray, I think it would be very helpful if we had the point of view for the landmark, historic landmark review.
Before we say anything to Colin, first?
I'm sorry. You wanted to ask Colin a question?
I wanted to make a comment to Colin, and I think Dr. Watson has her hand up first before me.
I know. So I was hoping that we would get to hear from all the people that are engaged, and then we can have comments and questions. So we'll, I'll remember Ms. Brown first and then Ms. Watson. Okay. Would you please walk us through this discussion on...
Good evening. I'm Stuart Graham, the Director of the Mecklenburg County Historic Landmarks Department, and with me is Tommy Warlock, our Preservation Specialist. And I'm going to ask Tommy to walk you through what is been recommended by the Charlotte Mecklenburg Historic Landmarks Commission for the Steel Creek Presbyterian Church property.
Thank you. Good evening. The Steel Creek Presbyterian Church property has been designated as a local historic landmark since 1991. It constitutes 31 acres. Of those 31 acres, 10 acres are associated with the cemetery, a half-acre parcel is associated with the historic sanctuary. The remainder are non-designated buildings or undeveloped property. The concept in order to preserve those historic structures, the historic cemetery and the historic sanctuary, is to take those properties that are not historic or have not been designated to take them off of the designation... to take them off of the designation and to allow those to be developed per Foundry's plans. As was told to you earlier, that will be able, that will enable the financing of those preservation and the preservation of those particular properties.
Okay, so I think we've heard from the three parties that the neighborhood, the Foundry, which is the developer, as well as the Mecklenburg County Preservation. So let's open it up. Ms. Brown, if you can help us with this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, 110%. So Stephanie and Steelbury Acres, I've been in constant communication with them. I was at the meeting, is Foundry here, a representative from Foundry? Oh, he's here. Foundry, they came in, they explained, they gave details. Mr. Brown, Colin Brown was there at the church. We met inside of the historic, beautiful church off of 160. There was some negotiation, Steelbury, they left, they were not satisfied, but one of the community leaders, Stephanie, who's here, she wrote a phenomenal letter, which I thought was amazing at that time. As a representative for them, and their representative sitting at the dais, she's been in constant communication with me over the last few days, and it's disheartening to them and their community. I don't know all of the details, so I can't speak on all the details of why the man's home was torn down. From what they're telling me, it should not have happened. The media got a hold to it, it was ugly, and so again, I don't know all the details, I won't speak on that, but I can surely speak to the fact of I understand their reservations, why they feel the way that they feel because of the way that it happened. If there was a way that we could prevent that so that that did not happen, because she was very fair in going in the community, knocking on doors, getting other residents involved, making sure their voices were elevated. And so it was a very strenuous process. Foundry spoke very well, they agreed to bring in She Built This City, which I think is a phenomenal opportunity, but when there goes that lack of transparency, when residents feel like, or constituents feel like their community is going to be sucked up and evacuated, and I can't speak to what's going to happen, I understand their position, so as their representative, I want to hold and support their position. And so I also want to read something. If someone wants to speak to what I just said while I'm finding what I need to read, I wasn't prepared to read it, I'm going to read it, Stephanie, what you sent to me. Foundry, can you come down for me, please? Is Foundry?
Careful with them steps.
Take your time. You'll have to come to the microphone here if Ms. Brown is going to ask him.
Hi, I'm Bill Somerville with Foundry Commercial.
Thank you so much, and I remember seeing you at Steel Creek Church, correct?
Sure.
On the day you presented. Would you tell what you proposed for She Built This City? And when Stephanie wrote the letter that I read for council some time ago, can't remember the exact dates, on why we came to an agreement, and I said, I would like to move forward with all communities coming to an end result like this. Will you share some of the things that you were going to do for She Built This City? On the property, as you stated that you would reserve the church, would you go over what you were doing for She Built This City?
Sure.
So that people listening and watching, and maybe the council that don't understand what you offered, I would like for you to say that. And I'm also going to still read what I said as I stand in solidarity with the community.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for letting me be here. The genesis of all this was we had a community meeting tied to the rezoning of the cemetery and the land that the John Douglas House sits on. That was passed a couple of months ago. At the end of that, sorry, the community meeting, we hosted over at the Steel Creek Sanctuary, Ms. Brown came to, Mr. Brown came to Stephanie and Diane and others, where we shared our plan, discussed. She Built This City taking over the historic sanctuary. So as it currently sits, it's vacant and needs to be occupied and brought back to life. Excuse me, She Built This City is a minority-owned, predominantly female nonprofit whose focus is training, teaching the construction trades to women and introducing them into the construction industry that's historically obviously dominated by men. They are out of space, and our agreement was to gift the sanctuary to She Built This City, let them occupy it, operate out of it, and in teaching their trades, restore the sanctuary and make that their new headquarters. We would gift that to them as well as execute a perpetual preservation easement with the Landmarks Commission to continue the preservation of the cemetery, but also the four or five acres or so that occupy, that front Steel Creek Road, all the big trees and the green grass leading up to the view of the sanctuary up on the hill, and then a little bit of excess land where we would contribute $50,000 to the Landmarks Commission to assist in their efforts to move the Douglas House across the property to a new home behind the sanctuary, where we would tie in utilities and create a building pad for that to reside and also be preserved under the same preservation easement. Ms. Brown, did I leave anything out?
And if I could add, I think, I talked to this loss last week as well to explain it, and I think a lot of the frustration is that for the Foundry rezoning petition, there was a community meeting, there was discussion, the community could see what was going on, a developer committed to save a house, to provide some community benefits, to work with historic landmarks. That was not what occurred with another property called the man's house, and I think that is the great frustration, that was a good bit of my call with the neighborhood, was, well, why did this happen this way and the other happen the other way? I can't answer why things happen on the man's house that's not involving us. I would say, and I know there's frustration, and I may agree with some of that, but we shouldn't penalize the group that has really operated in good faith, that's provided the types of community benefits that the community has told us they wanted. So that's what's so interesting is, hey, we want the same treatment for the other properties there, why is that happening? I don't know why that's happening, but we've got a very good actor that has worked in good faith. I think if you ask the community, has Foundry done a good job, they'd say so. I think there's frustration, want to use this leverage, but, so anyway, that's that. I hope that kind of explains some of the consternation.
Okay, so again, thank you so much for taking the time to explain that. You used the word penalize, which I really don't like. I don't think it's penalizing anyone. We're not saying we're not doing anything, I just wanted the community to be heard, and I've been very fair, showing up in my position and trying to be a balance for both sides. I'm a fair person. I just wanted the community to be heard, and I got a lot of emails, a ton of emails, and I didn't know what was going on. So I can't speak to something that I don't know about, and I, for me, I would rather get the information, have my colleagues tell me what's going on that's been here, my predecessors, the veterans on the council that's been here that could tell me what they thought. And when I reached out and asked, they were just as shocked as I was. So that is where the confusion came in. Nothing against the proposition that you have put before us, but I wanted to share where the concern came from, and it is a legitimate concern. So I don't want to downplay that it's not, it's in the same area. I also want to express their concerns on how they're saying just very little of the church is going to be saved. That's their concern about how much, is it just a little piece of the church that's going to be saved, or are we going to be saving the entire preservation of that church?
I'll defer to the historic folks on that.
Okay, yeah, I'm listening.
The plan, as was presented to the Charlotte Mecklenburg Historic Landmarks Commission, was that the historic sanctuary, and I believe it dates from the 1880s, and it's a substantial building, that the historic sanctuary would be preserved.
So the entire church?
The entire sanctuary.
Right, that's what I mean, the church, the sanctuary.
But the church, I mean, the churches also currently includes several other buildings that probably date from the mid-part of the 20th century, and those buildings would not be preserved.
Just the sanctuary.
And they're not historic.
Right, and only, the designation, the landmark designation only includes the sanctuary, so that'd be the 1880s sanctuary. So the buildings that are being proposed not to be preserved are not designated.
Okay, so I have an email here from Ms. Stephanie, so I'm going to go ahead and just read one part of it, and I'll forward it over to my colleagues so that they can see the email, because I do want my colleagues to understand where she's coming from and what she's saying. I know we have a few other questions on the floor, but it's, "Good evening, address the city council, mayor, all of us. Our neighborhood is being negatively impacted by the actions of the airport. Our property values and quality of life are being diminished right before our very eyes. An airport official made a recent statement that they are in the business to fly planes." Planes are not what we're talking about tonight, so she said that already. So why does it feel like the airport is transitioning to the business of land acquisition and manufacturing and logistics? For me, someone that represents the district and airport is one, is the largest economic, thank you, the word that I'm looking for, the largest economic driver for the City of Charlotte. We really have to be more transparent. The neighbors have every right to be upset. That neighborhood is beautiful, I drive past it every day, I drive past the church every day because I live right there in that area. So the concerns to me are legitimate concerns. I yield to the community and the residents, and I think we need to hear their voices, and we need to listen to their voices. So that's my position tonight as the representative for District 3.
Councilmember Brown, I know that we've heard from the commission and from Foundry, and I think that what I've heard is the man's and its issue and the airport, so why don't we have Ms. Gentry come up and talk?
I didn't even know she was here.
Ms. Gentry?
Was she here the whole time tonight?
Yes.
Yep, okay, I didn't see her.
Okay, sorry. Well, that's okay.
I didn't see her.
You can't see all of this stuff all the time, so why don't we get?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, and Council. There's been a lot discussed this evening, so I'm going to start with the item that is on your agenda. First of all, Steel Creek Presbyterian Church has been a mainstay in the airport community for centuries now. We did purchase the main campus in April of 2019. It was a matter of preservation for that congregation as to why they actually sold it to us. During that time, we committed to preserving the sanctuary. We permitted, we committed to preserving that in the interest of our entire community, not just the airport neighborhood. I can tell you that to date, between this transaction and the previous transaction, we've invested nearly $10 million in that property in the name of preservation. We then went through an extensive process of analysis for proposals. We initially did an interest solicitation, and then we actually went out for an RFQ, at which time there were numerous submissions that were received. We immediately cast to the sides the ones that did not have a plan for the sanctuary. Since that time, we have probably been through seven, eight, nine iterations of what could happen with the sanctuary, and we are so pleased that Foundry has worked with us to find a future user and put that back into active use. In terms of some of the things you've heard tonight, let me clarify for you why we have purchased this property and some of the neighboring purchases. This is one of the highest noise zones in our community. It is part of our Part 150 program. These neighborhoods are approved for sound insulation and/or home buyout. So Steelbury Acres, that you've heard from the residents tonight, we've been purchasing homes voluntarily in that area since 1983. It is a difficult place in terms of being in the middle of an area that is changing. That's why the church left, and we had made it known to the congregation, at any point, if you want to sell to the airport, you come to us and we'll be ready to do that. The development that is occurring is a federal requirement. Let me clarify that. When we buy something related to noise, we have a federal obligation to not return that to noise, to a residential area due to the fact we bought it for noise purposes. We must put it back into active use. And so that is what is happening in and around that area. We've been very prudent about this over the years. All of these homes right now, from the residents you've heard from, there are standing offers for voluntary purchase. I understand that's not what some of those residents want, but there is not an immediate plan for that neighborhood, nor will we be knocking on their door to ask them if they want to sell to us. That is completely voluntary. Is their neighborhood changing? Yes, it is. We are very committed to preserving the sanctuary, that has been our focus the entire time. I'd be happy to discuss the man's if you want, but I don't feel that that's germane to the action that you're taking, taking tonight.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so.
All right, I think I had Ms. Watlington next, so.
You had Ms. Watlington next, but not, Haley came up, I hadn't addressed her, but that's fine, I'll yield to Ms., Dr. Watlington.
No, I can wait.
No, we can, we're fine, let's, you want to talk with Haley? I thought you were asking.
I wouldn't ask.
I do. I have a question for her.
Go ahead.
Oh, well, are you finished?
No, go ahead, Dr. Watlington, yes. She was next.
Two questions. Um, well, not even really a question, a statement and a question, because this feels to me like a lot of what we're trying to prevent when we talk about anti-displacement, I understand there are needs, if you will, or there are reasons behind making these purchases, i.e. noise, et cetera, et cetera, but if I'm understanding correctly, once you buy it, then you're compelled to do something else with it, right? So my question becomes, why, why are we not being thoughtful about buying it?
You mean all of them, or, I think it's, is it, you mean, why wouldn't we buy everything?
No, what I'm saying is, why would, if we know that once it's purchased, that triggers particular events that have to happen, and we also know that we're spending a good bit of money in this city to prevent displacement, it just feels like a little bit of cognitive dissonance when we're now acting in such a way that accelerates displacement in a particular area. So before we talk about making purchases of particular properties and transactions, I feel like we owe it to Steelbury to think about how does this impact their neighborhood, just like we do for the corridors of opportunity, and I think that that plan needs to be more sound, and whether that comes through the community area planning process or a special work session, it just feels like there needs, there's work to be done there in that way. The other thing that I was going to ask is, I am particularly interested in this man's piece, so if you could just help us understand what happened, why is that different than what's occurring here, or why they would not be at risk for what happened before?
Well, they're very different situations. In 2018, council actually approved a historic structure preservation plan with the airport. It was put together as a result of the runway that was forthcoming, and we did that in conjunction with the environmental assessment that occurred during that period. We worked together with SHPO, which is the state agency, and we came up with a preservation plan and a strategy for how those doc, how those entities, those properties, rather, would be documented for various entities to use the information surrounding them. This was unanimously approved by council in 2018. It did involve tearing the man's down, and so this is, it was put on hold during COVID because we were spending, not spending anything but essential funds, and this is the soonest that it was able to be demolished. Now, in between all of that time, there was discussion with the HLC about its historic status, and so it did go through their process, and then it was actually removed from their process at the recommendation of their staff, and it was removed from your process at the recommendation of our staff. The county then issued the permit for demolition, and much like we do with all of our properties, we demolished it as quickly as we could. We realized there are neighbors living there, and over the years, we have let structures stand and tried to consolidate them into one demolition. That's not a good strategy for the neighbors who are there. So we've become much more attentive about the immediately taking down a facility as soon as we have that issue to prevent undesir- to prevent undesirable activities in an area that's not lived in.
So it sounds like then that the crux of it is whether or not something can be removed out of the process without council action?
I'm not, can you clarify that?
Sure, sure. I think I heard you say that, that, that the property entered into the HLC process and at the staff level, it was recommended to be removed. So if staff recommended it, who made the decision?
Our staff met with HLC staff. HLC staff agreed not to push it forward anymore, that it was not going to be pursued in that way. And our staff, when it came through, actually said, oh, this is different. The property owner was not aware that this was occurring. Let me back up. The property owner was not in agreement this was occurring, which was the airport, the city. And in addition to that, the property owner actually had, on behalf of City Council, has already taken a different action that this would be contrary to. So the two parties got together, we sat down, we tried to figure out what was going on, planning worked with HLC, and the action was removed.
Because the city was the property owner?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Ashmira, and then we'll come back to Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This has been a very difficult conversation to follow, especially after multiple back and forth, two different properties. I've seen media reports on this. I've seen Councilwoman Brown's emails about this. And just the statement that was first sent to the media, then it was retracted because it was corrected. So my question is really about the manse building, because I think that's where this, some of these issues around transparency stemmed from. And unfortunately, that is contributing to some of the confusion here on this agenda item. So I know you said that in 2018, City Council approved this unanimously. So when you say approved unanimously, was the demolition that was approved unanimously in 2018?
The demolishing was part of a larger action that was an agreement for numerous historical properties in the area of airport development.
So, so you represent Historic Landmark Commission, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I'm the county department director, and the landmarks commission is one of our primary responsibilities.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And preserving our historic structures. So Historic Landmark Commission made a decision to not demolish the site and to preserve it, correct?
I've got a statement of the actions of the landmarks commission and of the HLC staff. If I could read that?
Yes, please, so that I can follow the timeline because.
There, there may be some conflict with, with some of the other narratives.
Well.
If you could.
I'd be happy to read those.
Yes, and if you have a copy so we can follow it, I mean.
I can email this to.
Okay, that would be, thank you.
Are we getting a little off topic here?
I know, I was gonna say, what, what was the question that you're being asked?
Talking about another transaction.
Another transaction?
This is no, this is, this is very relevant.
Help me, no, Ms. Ashmira, I understand. I just want you to repeat what you've, the question that you've asked him. What I asked him is to help us understand the actions that were taken by Historic Landmark Commission, and the action that they take, they took was to preserve the site. So I asked him, what was the timeline about that? How is that different from what Ms. Gentry told us? Now, I want us to make sure we hear all the sites, because it's important in order for us to make a decision, that it's important to hear all sites. There are two different transactions. However, the issue here is transparency. So I think what, that's why I want to hear Historic Landmark Commission's timeline and the process and the statement that you have written, so we can better understand, is there anything that we need to do differently from transparency perspective to address communities' concerns?
But I think the problem is, I don't disagree that we need to have that conversation. I just, I think it has absolutely no bearing on the details of this case.
Ms. Gentry said that the council adopted a group agreement with, in 2018, to declare or decide to demolish several, what I would call historic properties, for the rationale was that they were out and not being maintained and that there were issues. So if that's not the story that we, if that's the story we've been told, I think everybody has had a chance to contribute. But if that's not the story, then what do we need to know?
The mayor, so I'm, this is my district, respectfully, and I am digging deep into this, because when it came out in the media, it was a mess.
Yes, I know.
And so in all fairness, I have to answer to these constituents. I get these tough emails. The media call me the interview. I yield not the interview because I can't speak on ignorance if I don't know. So we have a representative of the airport here, we have Steelbury, we have all parties here. So I think what my colleague, Ashmira, asks is relevant.
I agree. That's what I'm saying. I just summarized it to say, now tell us what's different, if there's something different.
Well, I'll restate it.
Okay.
Okay, because I think I kind of, you know, I'm kind of simple, because I don't have all this knowledge. So let's go.
I don't believe that.
I'm just saying. City council knowledge, I got a lot of knowledge. What is going to be the difference for what we're dealing with right now? Foundry came up with a very attractive deal and package to move forward, and I signed up on it and so did Steelbury.
Okay.
When the media got a hold to the manse mansion, historic, the HLC commission said one thing in the media, we were saying something else. But City Council, when I reached out to the knowledgeable colleagues of mine, none of them knew anything about it.
Right.
So I wanted to bring it tonight, in all fairness, not trying to keep you, I know school has started, I know people got to move forward, but we have a duty and we took a oath to serve this community. And I'm gonna sit here and I'm gonna serve this community. When we feel like we can't do that, then we need to give our position up to somebody else. It's plain and simple. We have a duty to serve. When it's election time, we stand out there in line all day and night, we should be able to sit in these seats all day and night. I don't care who it is, we should be able to sit here and do our job for our constituents. I'm gonna say that.
Yeah.
Because that is the truth. Everybody got these attractive signs when it's, when it's election time. But we need to make sure that we're attractive when we're on an agenda. That's just it, and that's all.
Can we let him?
So very relevant to what you're saying. To me, I'm gonna make a motion. If you don't want to hear, I'm gonna make a motion. And people might not like my motion.
No, I want to hear him.
Go ahead.
All right, I would be glad to, to give this brief statement.
Okay.
Okay. After months of meetings and discussion with CLT staff on developing a preservation plan for the historic Steel Creek Church manse on December 11th, 2023, in response to the planned demolition of the manse, the Charlotte Mecklenburg Historic Landmarks Commission voted unanimously to recommend to you, the Charlotte City Council, that the historic Steel Creek manse be designated as a local historic landmark. All of the proper processes were followed by the HLC and the staff of the Mecklenburg County Historic Landmarks Department. On January 19, 2024, staff emailed a resolution and associated package documents to Charlotte's Planning, Design and Development, pardon me, Department for consideration at City Council's February 12, 2024 meeting. The resolution would have scheduled a March 25, 2024 public hearing to consider landmark designation for the manse. Confirmation from Charlotte's Planning, Design and Development Department was received on January 24, indicating that the item had been added to the February 12, 2024 City Council agenda. That is all we know.
So what year was this?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
The year that I was elected.
So I, I have the floor. May I?
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you.
Very.
To say the list, from the city's perspective. HLC followed the process. And that's all I got to say. That's, there you have it. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I, I don't know what's going on. We're having a meeting up here. The minds, Ms. Gentry, you want to comment on this?
I would just ask that if there's anyone from planning here, I don't know if Monica's here or anyone. The airport was not in some of those subsequent follow-up meetings.
I get, I understand.
And so.
All right.
It's time.
And so as far as what's on the agenda and what's not, I just, just process-wise, so each department puts in placeholders, finished items, everything. And then we, as Strategy and Budget, collect all those into a first draft. Then we review those internally and say, is this gonna be viable and finished? Or is this gonna have to wait? Or this might be settled and not ever come forward? So that's part of what I do. And when we had a first draft, this was a learning curve for me, because these used to be own zoning, and this was the first, I had this situation where somebody said, wait, the city owns this, and the city's planning to demolish this. And so when I'm talking to the airport, they're like, oh, yeah, no. And I did not know that the commission had that authority to be able to put something without the owner knowing. So that's a process improvement. We're talking about transparency. We can start now, too, adding a clause, is the owner concurring something similar to that? Because I had no idea that something could be historically designated without the owner, you know, agreeing to it being, so, so I'm part of it, too, because I, I didn't know that anything that commission put forward automatically came forward. And when aviation's saying, oh, no, we've already worked with the state, we've got this plan in place, we've already submitted demolition, demolition paperwork and all these other agreements, that I said, okay, well, let me know what should work out. So that's, so I'm just saying that's behind the scenes process, but it wasn't really planning that did anything when she said planning to come up. It's more a process for the agenda, what gets on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Mayor, thank you, thank council for bearing. I didn't expect for the discussion to go as long as it did. But I know Councilmember Johnson wanted to ask a question, and Councilmember Mayfield, and then I'll close with what I have to say.
Okay. All right, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. Can you define sanctuary? Because I feel like there's some semantics here. Can you define?
Surely. And we probably don't have any visual, but at one point in the late 19th century, the sanctuary building, which was where they held the services, if you think about your typical image of a Christian church with the steeple and the box-like building, an auditorium building, that's the sanctuary.
Okay.
And so, again, and it is the historic building associated with Steel Creek Presbyterian Church.
Okay, thank you. You all were saying sanctuary, not sanctuary building. So I would just wanted to make, okay, thank you. That's all I wanted.
I, I know you're coming to the podium. I'm not quite sure why. I think Ms., Ms. Brown has said that Ms. Mayfield would be next in this discussion. Is that correct?
Okay, actually, I'm working directly with the city clerk's office to get some information to help separate, and I'll share it with the district rep to let her know what I was doing.
Okay, that's fine, no problem. So with me, Mr. Brown, did you want to say something else?
Uh-uh.
I just want to make sure we're distinguishing in the item of the tonight.
Yeah, we're moving.
The HL, this is the HLC's motion tonight.
Very, very clear on what I needed to hear as a representative representing Steel, Steel, Steelbury's in District Three. It's a huge district, so there's a lot of moving parts. But I want to be crystal clear on this one. When the article came out, I was totally lost. And what I just heard tonight is truly disturbing. And for staff, you guys work extremely hard. Thank you for your hard work. But if you can't understand the position that I have as a district rep, from what we've heard tonight, I know some of you it might be confusing and scratching your head as well. We got to do a better job with being transparent. What we just heard is conflicting information, and it's no wonder we're confused. It's no wonder our residents are confused. It's no wonder they have reservations. Because I am a person that is fair. When I sat in that church with Stephanie, she wrote a letter. When we move forward with our community and we have intentionality and being the best representation of the city that we can, it doesn't show in this demolition that we just took place. That's just my opinion as the rep. Foundry did a great job of representation, and they stood in the church with Stephanie. We can have a conversation with us, the residents. Stephanie, you said yield. You want the residents to be involved. I hear you. As your representative, I hear Steelbury. As the representative also, Foundry has not done anything to us for me to pull the plug on something that they're trying to move forward with. I want to be perfectly honest with that. However, I have your best interests as hard as your rep. I will work with you and I will make sure, everything that you ask me, the specific appropriation, making sure that the sanctuary will not fall into the same category, that what we said we would do when we had that meeting in the church is what we will do. I got sick that day. I wasn't even supposed to be there. But I came and I stood the entire time, so I heard everybody out in the church. So Colin, I don't know if you have any other questions for me, but for me to move forward in my representation with Steelbury, I want to be crystal clear, they have some unanswered questions, and I think we, you, myself, Foundry, and Steelbury will get together.
That's great.
Immediately.
Thank you very much for this, because I think you have captured, one of the things that's very important is, and I think both as a district rep, as well as Ms. Watlington, is to say, okay, what are we, this is an item on our agenda. It was sign up for a speakers list, and I'm not quite sure what the question is. I've heard that perhaps, I don't think we can build, build the manse again. So that's probably not gonna happen.
The manse, it got tied together.
But I've heard you say that you agree with the Foundry's association and commitment with the historic designation.
I agree with what they told Steelbury they were going to do. We need to make sure that we stand behind that. We need to make sure that is what is going to happen. But I also, as the rep, understand totally Steelbury reservation, why they don't believe us and why we look like we're not being truthful in their eyes with what just happened with the demolition of the manse. It's in the same vicinity. They have every right to pour out their passion and represent their community the way that they have tonight. And as their district rep, I don't see anything wrong with the way they presented themselves, and I stand with them. I've worked with Colin, and I know that he and I have a professional relationship, where we can work together and move forward. So I expect transparency and for it to be laid out, and I'm going to include the residents on everything that we do. I think that is a fair thing for me to do. You got anything else you need from me, Colin?
So I, I think that you've heard the question, can this be done in transparent? I think that we have an agreement with Foundry that's transparent. Would you agree with that, Ms. Brown?
The jury's still out on that, but I'm gonna stand on what I.
Okay, all right. So I, I guess what I'm, I'm understanding is that there needs to be more work with the neighborhood, and that might be something that would be possible for us to actually do. You know, when we were talking this, it was this afternoon, about the Ed McKinney's idea of how, what would they call the bubbles in the?
Strategic investment areas.
The strategic investment areas. Perhaps this is a time for the neighborhood to be a part and have discussions around the strategic areas that they want to see done and accomplish. If we do. If we do that, because that's like a planning bubble, if, if that's correct. So planning staff will be working in with the expertise from the neighborhood, as well as from the district rep. I think that that might be a strategy that would work for, um, how do we make sure that the neighborhood is being heard and ex, and valued? I think that's what we're trying to do. So I, I want to say that we don't have an action item on the agenda, but the action is around the idea of keeping that neighborhood's organized and vibrant, and that may be best under the strategic, um, investments that we're working on. That bubble list?
Yeah, I seen that. I just also want to bring something else. Like Haley said, that there's no immediate, there's no immediate plans to go through the neighborhood, and that is voluntary. So those are some key words that stood out for Steel Berry, you know, that we want to reserve history in our city. You know, you go, I'm just, I, I'll close, but I was in Philadelphia this past weekend. There's a lot of history in that city. Honestly, I've been living here for fifty-three. We don't have that history. It's just slowly evaporating and going away. I just have to make a clear, conscious, and solid statement. Everything that I saw as a little girl, chicken coop, is gone. I can go down the list. Mr. K's ice cream, you know?
Right.
Those are places that I've known, Mayor, and you know...
So, I want to make sure...
Mayor, we do have a number of ways neighbors can participate with the airport. Mrs. Last has participated in that in the past, and I would encourage her to continue that through our Airport Neighborhood Committee, um, Airport Roundtable, uh, excuse me, Noise Roundtable. There are various avenues for neighbors to get plugged in, and, um, we hear your concerns about communication.
Well, I thank you so much for saying that you hear our concerns, so I'll yield and give the meeting back to Mayor. In closing, I would like to say that, uh, Mrs. Lawrence, Stephanie, she's very, very intentional. She sent a heartfelt letter to myself, Colin, and Foundry, and was submissive in this process. But then when that happened, it just took her back to where she was at, so that was, to me, like a re-traumization for her. If I will say that. That, that reminded her of something that she didn't want to see, and that's how we got to this place.
So I, um, hearing everyone having an opportunity to speak, and, um, Ms. Brown's willingness to lead, um, can we now close, is there a vote on the public hearing and a decision on the amendment of the Steel Creek Presbyterian Church and Cemetery Historic Landmark Designation is the action that we have? Is there a motion?
Move to close the hearing?
Second. Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Um, all, any other discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your hands. Now, what is the next step after closing the public hearing?
Public hearing and decision.
Action B.
Action A, B. Is action B to, um, maintain, to have the, let's see if I have this here. We have action B, adopt an amendment with an effective date of August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, designating all land and structures associated with the property known as Steel Creek Presbyterian Church and Cemetery, with the exception of the tax parcels that are listed in our agenda. Do we have a motion?
Someone.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Okay.
Can we clarify that, Madam Mayor? I just, a point of clarification, because I want to make sure that I'm clear and make sure that everyone else is clear. Um, so the amendment is for what? Can someone, can you explain?
The amendment is in, it's on pa, it's in our agenda book.
Yeah.
On page twenty twenty-four, I believe, and so what, um, I don't, I'm not clear on the amendment, or it would say, adopt an amendment with an effective date of August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, designating. So Stuart, can you help me what that means exactly, and define it for all of us?
Happy to. Tommy may have to back me up on this, but basically, we're requesting that the Charlotte City Council amend the existing designation ordinance, and that amendment would de-designate some of the property, but would, uh, leave remaining the ten-acre cemetery and the approximately fi, four-and-a-half acres around the sanctuary. Those would stay designated historic, but the, the, uh, what would the other amount be?
Twenty-three acres.
But the other twenty-three acres that surround the church would no longer be designated as a landmark. And those twenty-three acres, I'll, I'll just venture to say, are a substantial part of the Foundry development.
So with that, Madam Mayor, with that clarification, I, I, um, it, I, the, the, the district rep has brought a lot of concerns forward. I, I'm looking for a recommendation to...
I would, I would like to actually ask, um, the, the airport, um, what is the impact of that compared to the materials that you gave us about the idea that once you have to do this, you have to treat the, um, community in voluntary? And is this, is this an acceptable statement, or is this gonna cause us more of this concern?
I think if you push this deal, then Foundry will take their money, and they will go invest it somewhere else in our community. And we have been turning over every stone to try and find someone to use this sanctuary. And I can tell you, it is not been an adaptive, an easy adaptive reuse. We've been through a brewery, we've been through Billy Graham Center, we've been through all kinds of workforce development entities trying to find a proper fit. We will continue for the building to be there, for it to be empty, and for it to be, um, to be unused. And our goal is to put it back into active use and preserve it. And that is absolutely a commitment the airport has made, and will continue to, to support. That's why we're doing all of this, is to maintain the historic sanctuary.
Madam Mayor, if I may say just one thing, is the Charlotte Mecklenburg Historic Landmarks Commission is in complete agreement. That is the reason that they have voted to recommend that the portion of this property be de-designated, because they believe that the Foundry project, project, sorry, that the Foundry project is of, an appropriate project for the adaptive reuse of the sanctuary. And it, you know, it is, it is not done lightly to recommend de-designation of any historic property.
Did you communicate that to the council? Did you send some type of correspondence to the council?
No, we don't have anything.
Communicating your decision?
I don't have nothing. We don't have anything.
The Landmarks Commission, uh, has brought this motion forward to y'all for your consideration.
She's asking if we have this before today.
Um, Mr. Mitchell has not been rec, has not had a chance to speak. So let's recognize, I think the question is, did have Mr. Mitchell address his concern or question?
Hey, so this is scary. Now I'm woke, right? I've been asleep for a while, so I, I apologize. I, I think you heard tonight, a, a lot of frustration, um, from neighborhood and from the city council rep. Is, if this is not time-sensitive, my motion would be to delay this
Second.
until we have some conversation with the district rep, the neighborhoods, and Historic Landmark Commission. This is not a good way for us to have this conversation at ten fifteen, and so if, Helen, it, Mayor Max, of course.
I, I think, um, I can see two questions from Ms. Gentry and Mr. Brown. Go ahead, Ms. Mitchell.
Okay, so, i- if it's not time-sensitive, I'll make a motion, we, we defer this action to, tonight, until September twenty, what's our last Monday meeting?
Hold on one moment, before we make that decision. We got, we want to hear from Mayfield. She had her hand up.
I, I had, well, no, I think Mr. Mitchell was trying to ask the question, but he, he didn't get his motion on the floor yet.
He did.
Oh, you got, you got a second?
A second.
And then I think what I've seen...
I was gonna second you. I just want to hear what you were saying.
Okay. Do you have a, are you addressing, is this...
I, I made a motion. I got a second.
What date, though?
You have a motion and a second, to delay until September.
We already had a motion and a second.
Yes.
Right?
We do.
So this is a substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
Okay, so, uh, I'd like to defer this action to the last Monday in September.
You don't have a meeting?
So should we go to the first Monday in October?
Yes.
To the first Monday in October, for this to come back to council, to allow Councilmember Brown and all the parties to have a conversation about how do we move forward?
Thank you.
The second Monday in October.
The second Monday in October. Okay. Any further, Ms. Ash, Mayor, you, is this to the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
For the substitute motion, for the deferral? I know this is the motion that we have on our agenda. It, it came as a recommendation of Historic Landmark Commission. Uh, so folks at Foundry, with this delay in any way, how would that have an impact, if any, to your project development timeline? Because I know you all...
Well, I mean, everything is time-sensitive, right?
I know.
Um, you know, Foundry's come a long way. They've worked with HLC, they've worked with the community, they have added community benefit. We want to get this done. Uh, the sooner the better. I mean, would it be possible to defer this to the September, put it on the September zoning meeting, which would... That soon, October, I was getting, that, that's tough.
I think what you're hearing is that the developer is saying that October is too far away, Mr. Mitchell. But Mr. Mitchell has the floor and the motion.
We appreciate Mr. Mitchell's effort.
All right.
I, I, I will hope the developer would agree with us and be a good corporate partner while we work through this collectively.
The September sixteenth work.
October.
But what is, this is August.
I can tell you, we are under contract with Foundry, and that has, that does have an expiration date. So I think the developer was, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we were striving to close by the end of the year. So we do have contractual documents that hold us to a certain timeframe, just for your awareness.
If I, if I may, Mayor. So, Ms. Gentry, when is the expiration date on the contract?
February.
February twenty twenty-five?
Yes, but the developer was trying to close before the end of the year.
But we're trying to meet the second Monday in October.
I understand that. I'm just wanting to share with you so you're aware that we do have contractual obligations.
Thank you. I, I, I'm confident that we can still meet your deadline at the end of the year, but I, I think we need this, this, this collective voice to work together to try to find a, a, a good solution for everyone to feel comfortable.
I, I think that Mr. Mitchell makes a great point there. If earlier, if we can get something organized earlier, that'd be great, but I think that we need to have more factual and more understanding from the neighborhood, as well as the impact on the airport. So, um, with the, we have a motion on the floor, um, to delay until October.
What's the date of council?
What's the date?
It's October the fourteenth.
October the fourteenth.
Counsel.
Feel free that Councilmember Brown, I wondered if... You could do anything between now and the fourteenth and come back whenever you're ready.
And I wanted to just give, thank you, Councilmember Mitchell, for making that amendment for me, or that motion. I also want us to walk away and learn something valuable here. I do. I want us to learn something valuable.
We have to vote on the motion first.
Let's vote, but I still want to speak.
I, I hear you. Um, so all, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Alright, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Mayfield had her hand up?
Yes, she did.
And then we'll come back to you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, my comment is for the manager. We've had conversations before about not having
Thank you.
a decision the same night as a hearing. Part of the challenge tonight is that this hearing potentially could have been held before we went out on our summer break, so that there was time for that conversation and not have a vote immediately. Because unfortunately, because we had two separate conversations happening, the reason I feel that we had two separate conversations is because some of us were the, under impression that for one part of the conversation, that was supposed to come back to council, and it did not make its way back to council. So when Councilmember Brown recognized me earlier, it's because I asked for our city clerk to pull up, to send to us sometime this week, the twenty eighteen original motion. Because I was here, and I do not remember us having a conversation regarding this piece. So somewhere in the initial, what was presented to us to vote on, I just want clarification of what was there, because now we're in twenty twenty-four. But earlier this year, I know from this dius, I asked questions regarding the potential of what's gonna happen with this space. I was under the impression it was going to come back, and that we were gonna have a chance to talk about it before, instead of reading it in the paper. The challenge is, there seems to be a period where within some departments, it is a need-to-know basis, and staff is determining what council needs to know. At the end of the day, we're the ones who the community's gonna ask the question of. We're the ones that is going to be in a particular position. For tonight, by, this was the first time that anyone's had someone from the airport to have a discussion, but at the same time, the hearing should have been a separate conversation altogether. And then at a later date, we should have had the conversation on voting on what's next. Because then, a lot of the questions that was asked tonight in reference to the hearing, there would have been time for the district rep, as well as her council colleagues, to review it and have a better understanding. So I would like to encourage, of we, which we've mentioned, several council colleagues have mentioned this on more than one occasion. It will be helpful not to have the hearing on the same night that there's a decision, because if we decide that we need more information, we don't get the chance. So then you have staff telling us that, well, we have a contractual obligation. No disrespect, that's not my problem. My responsibility, to the best of my ability, is to understand what's in front of us, and for us to hear from community, as well as the developers and petitioners, for that hearing. It does not help when we're put in a position where we need to do both on the same evening, without having enough information ourselves.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. Alright, so we, we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yep, I will have to Mayfield, and then we're gonna close.
We already voted on the motion to close. Yes, but Ms. Um, Brown would like to be...
Yeah, I'd be very brief. I just wanted to say, this is a ve, very valuable lesson for us to take away, and, and to be good stewardess over our, our community and the assets and what they put in front of us. You know, when we go and we get the budget and we look at things and we vote on them, and we, we try to support our manager to the best of our ability, these are things that we really got to be careful about. Foundry is definitely not bad at Foundry, and they were very transparent on what they were gonna do with She Built This City. And so that's why I was reserved. Then I'm glad that my colleagues stepped up to make a motion that would not put them out of the picture, but it is for all of us to look through a clear lens on how we represent moving forward. I cannot ignore a community of people that had one hundred signatures plus, still counting. That's gonna affect the condition of that community and that district. So I'm happy with the decision for the respect of Foundry, because they did nothing in this position there in the line of fire, because we didn't do what we were supposed to do. And I say "we" collectively, because now I sit on the council. Nobody wants to hear you didn't know. So that's why I reached out to my colleagues. So I'm happy with the decision that we made. I'm sure, I'm sure that we can move forward in good faith and make this work for everybody. That's what we did the first time.
Okay, let's go to an item, agenda item number eight. It's a public hearing and decision on the Alexander Howell House Historic Landmark Designation. Um, this is a public hearing to consider the Historic Landmark Designation for the property known as Alexander Howell House. Are there any speakers? Any speakers?
Move to close the hearing.
Alright, we're gonna close the public hearing. Do we...
I need a second.
Second.
A second, yeah, we need a second. All in favor of closing, Stephanie has a question.
Are you doing A and B?
Yes. Yes, we're doing A and B.
Okay.
And on item eight, I, I wonder, though, I'm gonna say, not knowing, not having the reports and things, like what I think happened today was with the lack of clarity, I wonder if we ought to just wait and see, because none of us, I think, how many... Because none of us, I think, how many of us, well, maybe other, I mean, this has been something that, you know, Councilmember Brown has been going through for this other one. Let's not get into another one. We need to have, I think, some better process for looking at these designations than just the agenda.
I think I agree.
So I'm going to suggest that we have this as a part of the discussion. It's like, if you can, if Ms. Brown and the neighborhood and all of that can work and we'll have some staff folks that could do this, then let's bring all of these back at one time.
Thank you.
No ma'am, no, no, no ma'am.
No ma'am.
No ma'am.
No ma'am.
I'm sorry.
You have to sign up to speak.
I have to sign up?
Yes.
But we just closed, okay. We didn't close the public hearing. And you're?
She can sign up.
With Alexander Howell House? Please, I don't know if they can, we can, yeah.
Right there.
Be careful, you can use the microphone there and that way.
Stephanie says.
You did not, there was a motion on the floor, and you did not vote on that motion, so.
Hearing's still open?
She changed, she changed the door.
The motion was to close the hearing. There was a second.
There was no vote to close it.
There's been no vote.
So she can speak.
But we need her.
Well, I'm looking at the attorney as the parliamentarian.
Maybe you should withdraw your motion so that she can speak as part of the hearing.
There you go.
Do I need to withdraw my motion?
If the intention is for the speaker to speak, yes.
Not the city attorney, we pay.
I think that because we did not close, we did not close the motion for A. We will hear from you, and then Ms.
For parliamentarians' sake and for, I am withdrawing my motion. Is that correct, Kelly? Ms. Kelly?
Okay, if you would give us your name, and at some point, I know you're up there talking, but we'll need your address, or we can contact you at the clerk's office with a phone number and something like that. Okay.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Ashley Larkin. My husband had to leave, but we are the current proud owners of 250 Cherokee. A full report was provided and created for us to explain the architectural significance of the property that we hope to protect. Much like all these conversations I've heard tonight is exactly why we went through this lengthy process, and it's not an expensive process either. But we seek to protect our, this residential property with great significance historically in a historically significant auto-centric neighborhood in Charlotte that is threatened all the time by retail development, medical development, multifamily high rises. And we have a significant piece of property that's just under two acres. So we are particularly at risk. I'm just about a block off of Providence Road on Cherokee. I think the report, if you have read it, I think it was in the agenda, was beautifully written explaining the origin of the home, the families that built it, the history of the neighborhood, the importance of the architect. And furthermore, proposed that the house be not just called Sidnum Alexander Home, but the Alexander Howe Home, because Vard Howe, who resided there, was a significant leader in our community. We have gone through the Historic Landmark Commission process. It was taken to the state, and now we are here hoping for your approval because like all these other conversations that have been going on, we are anxious to keep this house from being torn down and demolished. We are offered ridiculous sums of money for developers to come in and tear it down. And our hope is to stop that as the current owner and not allow that to happen to ourselves or our neighbors or our community. So I just plead with you that you will consider our request. We've taken a long, hard look at it. We're not doing it for tax reasons. We really have been warned that we can significantly impact the resale of the property by doing this. But our intention is very clear and purposeful with our mission to protect a historic structure in the city of Charlotte where things are getting completely demolished all the time. And I thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you for speaking all night.
Move to approve A and B.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve A and B and a second. And is there anyone that would like to speak to that? Ms. Johnson? I think that we actually have her information. It's in their application, in the document that we have. So we do have yours.
I can give it to you very easily.
Now, we have it, it's in our, it's in our agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's Peter. You can see it. I want to broadcast it all over.
I know, there are six attachments, so it takes time to read.
Okay, my question, my question is, you wanted to, we talked about deferring it earlier. Are we going to defer? Defer, and then my second question is, if, I'm supporting the historic designation, but can we hold off on, on the name, just the name and not commit until it's gone through? Because there's been some processes of renaming things in the city lately after research. So I don't, I don't know if that would, this would fall into that, but I just want to.
I think actually Tommy and Stuart might speak to that much better than I can. The researcher, the architectural historian, when doing her research here in Charlotte, felt strongly that the Howe's involvement and prominence in the community should be noted and attached with the house along with Sidnum Alexander. I think she gives a justification much better than I can go into detail with.
Okay, thank you. If we're, but we're going to be deferring it, right? To do all of that research?
I don't, I think the motion was to go ahead and. Yeah, my motion was to approve A and B. Because in this case, there is no confusion, there is no community opposition. The longer we wait, we might lose this.
Yes.
I mean, there is a sense of urgency here. The current owner wants it, there is no opposition. We want to preserve this two acres in District Six. There is a six, I mean, there are six attachments. It shows why Historic Landmark Commission supports it. There is a long history behind it. I don't see a reason why we need to defer this. I mean, I understood the first one because of the community opposition.
This is actually a normal course of business thing. We're talking about creating and not de-listing.
Exactly.
And I don't see the controversy around this one.
Exactly.
There's no analogy.
It doesn't involve any other governmental rules or regulations. It's just basically the process. So I think if, I think it's appropriate that we could have a motion to approve the Alexander Howell House Historic Landmark Designation, if the council so chooses.
Point of order. Well, I can wait till after we vote, but I do have a point of order.
She's a chicken waiting till after we vote.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion on it? All in favor of the designation, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Your motion was to approve A, close the hearing, and B, correct?
Yes, yes. Okay, all right, so that. Ms. Mayfield, how did you vote?
You haven't asked for a pose. For consistency's sake, I said we need to stop having a hearing on the same night as a decision, so I am a no.
So a no vote, okay. So that passes, all right? The next item is the public, point of order, yes.
Yes, ma'am, I realize that it is 10:38 at this point. I know that on our zoning meeting nights, we have a hard stop at 10:00 PM. So given that we still have a substantial agenda, I just want to lift up the fact that we are past that 10 o'clock, and I think we need to make a decision as to whether or not we're staying here to finish this meeting or to move this to a future agenda.
I got the memo, Marcus said he was paying us overtime.
Oh, well, in that case. Just Steve. That's a motion.
I think it's, I think it's part of coming back from a rather long opportunity to get some time with our family and friends and other things.
But that won't do any good if we just give it all back.
And that's, I agree, I understand that. But I guess the question is, if the council would like to proceed for another 10 minutes or adjourn and have a separate date?
It's not going to be 10 minutes, you're being very kind about that.
Well, maybe about 10 o'clock.
That's part of the agenda. Our first meeting, we were given a half an hour to ask questions, and it actually took an hour and a half. So those are the kind of things that need to be planned out.
I say move it.
I love that idea of a planned out meeting.
Best session.
Ideal, but.
Whatever you want to do.
Okay.
What else is on the agenda that's going to take a long time? I was just scrolling through.
It's resolution of alleyways and things like that. You've got nominations that can be submitted, regional transportation planning.
So we have a lot.
Didn't make a motion.
Does it need to take a long time?
Okay, we can take this time and spend it talking about time, or we can go ahead and continue.
We got two that got little ones.
I would suggest that.
Or we can make a motion.
Let's go with 11.
She's almost loving me.
I mean, all 11, good. And a mayor, if I may, I'm sorry, but if we could at least do the next public hearing, because otherwise, and this is totally. But we'd have to restart the notice requirement if we move that.
All right, let's go ahead. We're going to take item number nine, public hearing and decision on John Phillips Little Junior House Historic Landmark Designation for A and B. Conduct the public hearing, and we have, do we have any speakers? None. Adopt an ordinance with an effective date of August 26 for the Little John House, which is John P. Little Junior House, 1136 Queens Road. And there's a picture of the house and the history of it right there. So do we have a motion?
So move.
A and B.
A and B. All right, any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? I mean, raise your hands so the clerk can get to it.
It was unanimous.
All right, is anyone opposed? Okay, with that, that leads us to a public hearing to close an alleyway off of Kensington Drive. Is there anybody that's speaking towards that? Not hearing anybody?
Move for A and B, Mayor.
All right, do we have, we have a motion for the closure of the alleyway off of Kensington Drive. All in favor, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? All right, that moves on as well. There is no manager's report.
Okay.
Come on, come on, Marcus.
There are, the nominations can be submitted to the clerk if you have your nominations. That would carry us through 19 to 26. We do have acceptance of some grants that we need to have, and we can go through those pretty quickly if we can have six people stay with us, all right? So on the first one is, accept the carbon, a motion to accept the carbon reduction program discretionary grant.
A and B, move for approval.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? I need more hands. One, two, three, four, six, okay. So that takes us through the next item for municipal agreement with NC DOT.
Move for approval, Mayor, A and B.
We have a motion, and is there any? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four.
Dimple.
Dimple.
She's here, she went to the.
Everybody's here.
There are, yes, okay, thank you. All right, so that made, that motion is approved and that's adopted. The lease at the McGill Rose Garden.
Move for approval, A and B, Mayor.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Anybody, raise your hands, please? Anyone opposed? All right. The next one is the lease of office spaces for the police department in the North Division.
Move for approval, A and B.
All right, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. And we, I need enough, Ms. Molina, please, thank you, that's helpful. All right, so the next one is the soil, Mecklenburg Soil and Water Conservation District Urban Cost Share Program.
Move for approval, Action A.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anybody, raise your hand if you're in favor. All right, that passes, anyone opposed? That's here. The next one is 17, Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization Memorandum of Understanding.
Give the mayor authorization to execute the memorandum of understanding.
All right.
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, the next item is interlocal agreement for youth diversion program grant for the fiscal year of 2025.
Move for approval.
Second.
You have a second. All in favor, raise your hands. Thank you. The next ones are our nominations, and please send those in. And do we have a motion to close? I'm sorry.
I already have the votes. If I, there are several that received more than six. If there is a motion and you feel so inclined to appoint those persons, we will only bring one board back to you next, at the next meeting. For the bicycle advisory, Constance Wagner received seven nominations. For the Citizens Review Board, Teresa Marassio, Marassio, I'm sorry, received nine nominations, as did Susie Taylor for the Domestic Violence Advisory Board. And Angelia Buford Hayes received nine nominations. And Christine Hart received six nominations. And for the Historic District Commission, Sarah Kerm received 10 nominations, as did Cameron Holtz.
All right, so you heard the clerk's announcement for the bike committee, city, city citizen review board, domestic violence council, and the historic designation. And all of those receiving the appropriate amount of votes to be founded, to be assigned to these committees. All in favor, do we have a motion? And all in, do we have a motion to accept? And we have a motion, and please raise your hand if you're in support of the motion. Anyone opposed, thank you very much. All right, the other one, you have to bring back the public access?
Yes, ma'am.
Always, always have to bring them back, always. Okay, thank you, everyone, for helping us get through tonight, tough, tough times.
You got a.
You have a motion to close, everybody go home.